I'm going to call the meeting of Sewer Utility District Commission to order. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Strelcek?
Here.
Commissioner Bushy is not here. Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
Commissioner Worth?
Here.
Commissioner Girrell?
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Commissioner Nurban?
Here.
And Commissioner Abendroth is absent.
Commissioner Bushy is here too.
We do have a quorum.
And Commissioner Bushy is here.
We do have a quorum. Item number two, approval of meeting minutes, action requested.
Approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion, corrections? Hearing none, look for the, looking for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number three, resolutions. Action requested review and recommend approval for resolution 3447, a resolution approving award of the contract for private property inflow and infiltration sanitary sewer lateral rehabilitation work on West Shoreland Drive, Cory Lane, and Lake Shore Drive to Moose and Brothers, Inc., of Brookfield, Wisconsin, the amount of $460,002.25. Look for a motion.
Vote for. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Anything from staff? Any questions? Alderman Worth.
Years ago, when this first came up, we had a variety of discussions on whether or not the city should be funding this, in part because, and I, at one point it got tabled, and then it must have come back when I was not an alderman. I guess I'm trying to figure out what decisions were made in the interim. Has there been a commitment then for the city to do all of the PPI and I repairs throughout the city? Or are these the lucky few that are going to get their repairs done for free and, and we don't, we haven't made a decision what's going to happen with the rest of the city?
You are correct that the Sewer Utility District Commission was not willing to authorize a full PPI and I program. So this is the result of the pilot program that was approved for a specific district. You may recall that there was some dye testing that was done on the Shoreland area that we decided to follow through with actual improvements for the potential people that participated in the program. That area was identified, and at the time that the pilot program was going through the approval process at the Sewer Utility District Commission, we identified some low-hanging fruit, so to speak, the lift station K area, that it was obvious that there's some infiltration in the area, so it would have been a big bang for our buck, so to speak, to be able to address it as a part of the program. So this is just a pilot program. The city did not approve a policy, but to be clear, the city is not funding this. This comes through MMSD funds.
But we could have picked anywhere in the city to apply those MMSD funds.
Yes, so what we decided to do was honor...
So there are some preferred people in the rest of the city?
Well, I would argue that because it's a benefit to the, to the system, we look for where there's the largest peaking factors and would be the maximum benefit to the system as a whole. As we all know, with the East Trunk Sewer issue, capacity issues that we're having, keeping I and I out of the system is a benefit to all property owners to make sure that the inflow doesn't subsequently end up in someone's basement.
Okay, so I'm going to vote no, and my reason for voting no is, I think, without a, a policy to make sure that homeowners are treated equitably and across the board in a similar way, I'm not willing to give these guys something that somebody who, in the next phase, isn't going to get.
Alderman Strelcek?
I'd like to just highlight that, you know, at that meeting, the areas that we're doing are problem areas, and that's kind of how that was selected. It was an area where we had some issues with definitely higher volume of stormwater inflow, and that review was kind of based on that. I think it was more of an equitable fund. Alderman Nurban's remembering something similar. I'm not expressing it very well today, I'm sorry.
Alderman.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we came to this point because we couldn't agree on a policy system-wide. These funds go away someday if we don't use them. We were getting almost no participation in the target area when there was a potential that someone would have to pay for any improvements that were identified in the testing, so to entice people to even participate in the pilot program, we decided to pay for all the repairs. And magically, people came out of the woodwork and volunteered to be tested, so we, if we hadn't done that, we'd have learned absolutely nothing. We'd have almost no participation, and the whole study would be a bust, and we'd lose this money that is being provided by MMSD that is there for this use. If we don't use it, it's going to go to someone else. If, is that accurate?
Correct. Correct. And the fund continues to accumulate, so they are taking the money from City of Mequon Sewer users for the purpose of reimbursing it to the city for PPI and I. So what, we went through a three-part policy discussion, and you're exactly right that we couldn't come to a policy conclusion, so we were approved to move forward with a pilot project, and this is the result of that pilot project.
Alderman Worth?
Well, so I guess that, one follow-up question then. Only people who actually volunteered to have their pipes studied are getting this, these repairs, or is it a whole neighborhood?
We, we identified the pilot project areas. Again, they're, the, the original dye testing was only done on Shoreland Parkway, but we added the lift station K area as a part of the pilot project on Cory Lane and Lake Shore Drive. So even those on Shoreland Parkway that did not participate in the initial project were still offered to participate in this phase of the project.
See, I, I would be willing to, for the people who participated in the study, because that was a promise made, be willing to pay for that. I'm concerned that there are not enough funds in this program, and yet, yeah, they might be the low-hanging fruit, but somebody else is going to be low-hanging fruit tomorrow and next year and three years from now, or five years from now, and we, without making a commitment that we're going to, I, I just think we have to treat people comparably and fairly. And if we're not willing to make the commitment that we're going to fix their private property, we shouldn't make the commitment to fix this private property.
We're, we're happy to bring the policy discussion back again. Again, the pilot project was approved, and this is the contract to implement that, but we're, we're happy to bring the policy discussion back again because we can't spend any more money without either authorization of another pilot project or acceptance of a subsequent policy.
Alderman.
So I, I think there's two components to the study, though. There's studying the sewer pipes in the road up to the road right-of-way, and then some of the people that volunteered, the inspection went farther up their sewer lateral, correct?
Well, we are responsible for the publicly-owned portion of the pipe.
Exactly.
So you're right. We televise our own.
So we, we looked at that for everyone in the area.
Yes.
I think only the people that volunteered to have the camera shoved all the way up their sewer pipe.
Right. Well, again, there's...
There's others who are getting it too. Getting faxes.
Again, we're happy to bring the policy discussion back. The contract before us tonight is the result of the pilot program that was previously approved.
I'd like to probably bring it back and discuss it again. I liked what Alderman Worth said. I agree with that 100 percent, is that we should treat everybody equally, honestly, and fairly. So if there is any, any, you know, I'm not, first is, I was on it the first time around, but if we can discuss it another, one more time and bring it back again, I would, I would, I'd appreciate that.
Of course. Again, the, the only thing staff had authority to move forward with at this point was that pilot project. So the, the next consequence would have been either establishment of a policy based on the pilot program or authorization of a new pilot program for a specific area.
I guess the previous, you know, on Sewer Commission, we approved this, we moved forward, this is the contract to get the, get the work done, the funds are there, it's not our monies, it goes away if we don't use it. How long is the program for?
You can go.
The program currently goes through 2020.
So there are possibility of a lot more residents being able to get on this?
Yes.
Is the fund to become available? Alderman.
One last thing. If I remember correctly, also, that we looked at trying to scope what the entire cost of doing the whole system was, and the number's staggering. It's ten, several tens of millions of dollars, far exceeds the funds that this fund will ever provide, potentially. Part of the reason for the pilot program was to get data on percentages of how many pipes are failing and what kinds of things need to be fixed, so we could better cost model the rest of the improvements to the system going forward. So this is, like you say, it's just the pilot studies so we can refine our model on the cost side, and, I mean, to do the whole system, the costs are staggering. It's, we will need a policy, but the intent was just to pay for this, to entice people to volunteer going for, so we had some data going forward.
Yes, we can certainly bring it back. We can remind those that were on the commission how we got to this point and introduce the idea for those that weren't on the commission, and, again, either move forward with establishing a, with a policy if the commission can agree, or a request to authorize a new pilot program so that we don't lose the funding that's available.
Alderman.
I'm agreeing with where this is going. I guess, as the person in second, I'd like to maybe make a friendly amendment that, that if we could move to, you know, move in second to approve this tonight contingent upon the policy discussion coming back at the next meeting. I think, I think we're kind of unanimous on that.
Actually, we'd, we'd prefer not for it to come back until after we have some conclusive data at the completion of this project, but, but before we would move forward with any subsequent projects. But we'd rather bring some data along for the policy discussion so that you can use that in your decision-making.
And how long might that be?
When's the project end?
The completion date of the project is November.
What was that?
The completion date of the project is in November.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, look for the vote in resolution 3447. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Strelcek?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushy?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Worth?
Point of order, does the chair, oh, in the, I'm sorry, does get a vote in the committee? No.
Commissioner Girrell?
No.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Nurban?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to two. Resolution 3449, a resolution authorizing city staff to file the City of Mequon's compliance annual maintenance report, CMAR for calendar year 2016 in accordance with regulations under the Wisconsin Administrative Code NR208.
Vote approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, look for the vote. All in favor, resolution 3449, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Vote to adjourn. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Do you have a water one or no?
It's just the mayor's, not vote, except in case of...
And what does it say? The chair. There's a position, there's a... The mayor presides. Doesn't say anything about voting there. President of council, if mayor's absent, if there's a time of meeting, president shall preside. Doesn't say anything about restrictions, the head has the ability to assume...
That part through, and then you're reenacting on the...
Absence of presiding officer, that's...
Now what?
Just says it's this person, this person, this person.
Okay.
He gets the vote.
On the agenda, you have to be under numbers to be done.
I won't be in vote most of the time, except on the last thing.
Do I have this? What are these done for now?
The material, not matter, getting it out, not getting it out.
Oh, this is for that refunding judge?
Or dead trees?
Good evening, everyone. Like to call the Tuesday, June 13 Common Council Meeting to order. Please follow me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom of the religion and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Please call the roll.
Alderman Strelcek?
Here.
Alderman Bushy?
Here.
Alderman Worth?
Here.
Alderman Girrell?
Here.
Alderman Hawkins?
Here.
Alderman Nurban?
Aye.
Mayor Abendroth is absent. Acting Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Item number two, specified miscellaneous new business, District 7 Alderman vacancy, recommended by Committee of the Whole on May 16, 2017, to appoint Kathleen Schneider to the District 7 automatic seat through the end of its term.
For appointment?
Second. Got a motion and a, and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Alderman Strelcek?
Aye.
Alderman Bushy?
Yes.
Alderman Worth?
Aye.
Alderman Girrell?
Aye.
Alderman Hawkins?
Aye.
Alderman Nurban?
Aye.
Mayor Meyer?
Aye.
Mayor Meyer? Don't let my wife hear that, to be honest with you. President at best.
City Clerk, could you please administer the oath of office to Kathleen Schneider?
Hi, Kathleen Schneider. Having been appointed...
Turn down.
To the office of Alderman District 7. Swear that I will support... The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. Faithfully and impartially... And will faithfully and impartially... Discharge the duties... Discharge the duties... Of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Welcome. Is she leaving? Boy, that was short-lived, yeah. See, we knew she was smart.
She's already running. Oh, and you give her using my, a working microphone, too.
Someone must have fixed it.
New people get all the privileges.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Item number three, personal appearances and public comments, citizen wishing to address the Common Council in any matter not on the agenda, may do so at this time. We do have one person that is registered. That is Dave Wade. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Wade, and I'm the chairman of the Renneke Field Committee. I'm also the president of Boss Baseball Academy, which is a 501(c) that's based in Mequon. I also was a director in Thievesville-Mequon Youth Baseball. I had two sons play for Homestead, and now they play for the Mequon-Thievesville Twins in the Rock River League. I just have a, a request, but I wanted to give you a little bit of a background first. The Renneke Field Committee does all the maintenance for Renneke Field. We have volunteers that provide all of the services. Some of them work for the Brewers Ground Crew. We have gotten donations for the equipment, like the tractors and things like that, that we use to do the field, and we do all the fundraising. The fundraising comes through a tournament that we run that's called the Highlander Battle, and we sell the banners that you see surrounding the field. So everything that happens at the field has been paid for by the committee in some way, shape, or form. The backstop that is relatively new was $156,000 investment, and we paid for $52,000 of the backstop. We put in the dugouts, we got a donation for the new scoreboard, we took the old scoreboard, and we placed it at Lemke Park. We refurbished it. So the committee is the central entity that is kind of doing all of the maintenance. I have a concern that if the committee kind of goes away or doesn't have the, the same people helping with it, that there isn't quite enough funding to make the diamond what we want it to be for the city, especially with the building going around and the town center. I think the diamond is kind of a, a gem in the community. The people that come to the field, we run tournaments, we have the North Shore Conference, we have cities that come from the Rock River League, we have youth teams. Everybody loves the field, they think it's awesome. It's like a minor league field, and the setting is just really, really good with the city hall here, the library framing it, the Ozaki County Trail. I wanted to comment that it'd be great to have a new diamond, but I don't think it's really that realistic to fundraise $7 million. I've been doing this for eight years. We've only gotten two donations ever. Capco gave us some money for the scoreboard, and we got a tractor donated from the golf course. So it's very difficult to raise $7 million, and meanwhile, we're kind of struggling a little bit to fund some of the things that could just maybe spruce it up, maybe make it a little bit better. So a couple weeks ago, we funded a complete, complete remaintenance of the field, which is re-leveling it, edging it, top dressing. It cost $6,100, and we funded all of those repairs. That kind of maintenance is required yearly, and the, really, the only true support that we get that, that, that costs money is the city mows the outfield grass. Don Curran, the park director, is awesome to work with. It's been a really good relationship, but he doesn't have any money to do some of the things that we need to have done. And I'll just mention a couple things, but we could use new bleachers. The shed is rotting, and we can't put, we, we, we support our tractor out in the woods. There's a building out in the woods, but that's going to be torn down on June 30 to, for the development, and we don't even have anywhere to put our Sampro tractor. And I had found a donor, donations to build a new shed, but it's kind of being held up because of thoughts of maybe further development of the diamond. So we, as of June 30, we don't even have anywhere to put the tractor because the shed isn't big enough and it's old and rotting. So there's minor things that could be done to the field with a little bit more funding. I mean, I, I guess why I'm here is ultimately just a request in the future to fund the park department for maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $15,000 for the field, so that we have money to do some of these repairs and some of the maintenance and some of the things that are necessary. We'll continue to do the fundraising and, you know, the tractors and the maintenance and things like that, but we need a little bit more support. I think the park department needs a little more support, especially with this diamond being in the center of the town center and really being a gem that it is. So thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you will help the park department.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Item number four, public officials' reports. I have nothing, city administrator.
I have nothing tonight.
Item number five, consent agenda. At this time, any alderman can pull one of the items for separate consideration if they decide to do that. The consent agenda includes common council meeting minutes of May 9, Board of Appeal meeting minutes of April 27, Bureau of Permits and Inspections report for April 2017, Ethics Board minute meetings of August 4, 2016, Finance and Personnel Committee meetings of March 14, 28, April 18, 2017, Fire Department reports for April and May 2017, Park Board meeting minutes of April 19, 2017, Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 10, 2017, Police and Fire Commission meeting minutes of April 18 and May 2, 2017, Public Safety Committee meeting minutes of February 21, 2017, Public Welfare Committee meeting minutes of March 7, March 14, March 21, 2017, Public Works Committee meetings of March 14, 2017, River Advisory Committee meetings of April 20, 2017, Sewer Utility District Commission meeting minutes of March 14, 2017, Zoning Enforcement and Site Compliance Report through June 1, 2017. It also includes resolution 3448, a resolution authorizing approval of certified survey map for the property located at 111627 West Highland Road in connection with the declination of 40 feet of public road right-of-way, recommendation forthcoming from Planning Commission June 12, 2017. Resolution 3449, a resolution authorizing city staff to file the City of Mequon's compliance annual maintenance report, CMAR for calendar year 2016 in accordance with requirements under Wisconsin Administrative Code NR208, recommendations forthcoming from Sewer Utility District Commission on June 13, 2017. We voted on that tonight. Resolution 3450, a resolution authorizing development agreement for the enclave at Mequon Preserve Phase III, addition number two, for the remaining 16 lots of the 50 lot single-family subdivision located at 10729-10839 North Wabatosa Road, recommendation forthcoming by Planning Commission June 12, 2017. Look for motion?
Vote to approve.
Have a motion to approve a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Worth?
Well, I'd, I'd report that the Planning Commission recommended both of these items at last night's meeting, but that the final item had one amendment that was up to that resolution or the requirements of the developer, and that was that prior to the, the final plat approval for Phase III, when that occurs, that the developer shall have installed the street light that was required as part of Phase I that has not yet been installed.
Am I stating that correctly, Ms. Tolleson?
So I'd ask that that be a friendly amendment to item R, rather than pulling it out, but simply making that a friendly amendment to the...
Yes, no problem.
Second amendment? Is there a friendly amendment on that? Any further discussion?
Just one point of order on that very same item, resolution 3450. The city clerk's office issued an amended agenda, and the actual number of remaining lots is 17 and not 16, as was published in the agenda distributed last week. So that's 17 lots of the 50 lot single-family subdivision.
Yes, I had that, sorry.
Just a point of order.
Any further discussion? We have motion to approve, we have a friendly amendment, and that's approved. All in favor of the consent agenda being approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Item six, without convenience, Committee of the Whole. And first item was approval of Committee's, Committee of the Whole minute meetings of May 16, 2017.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and an approval. All in favor, any, any changes or suggestions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes of last meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Item B, discussion regarding the parking analysis for the City of Mequon Civic Campus and adjacent Town Center and Developments.
Good evening. We're be for you tonight to discuss two specific items related to the ongoing parking analysis for the Civic Campus, and that's to discuss whether or not the Phase II parking scope that was approved last month should be amended to include SPUR 16. There was some discussion during the Committee of the Whole meeting last month as to whether or not it should be included, but the scope as approved did not include that SPUR 16 development. So we've included in the report some options of how that could be implemented if so authorized, and we're here tonight before you for a discussion as to whether or not that amendment should be authorized. And we also heard feedback about the discussion of the parking analysis, but not discussion about the potential parking solutions. So we've put together, at least from staff's perspective, some of the parameters of what would be included in Phase III for the discussion regarding actual parking solutions, and we're looking for your feedback regarding that scope of services. We're really just looking for feedback at that point. This, that scope of services would come along with the results of the Phase II analysis so that with that information, the Committee of the Whole and subsequently the council could make an informed decision as to what they would or would not want to authorize. We're just looking at this point for feedback as to what should be included in that scope.
Alderman Worth?
Well, I'm kind of disappointed on how this whole process has gone along, considering that the original resolution asking for a parking study included...
that with that information, the committee of the whole and subsequently the council could make an informed decision as to what they would or would not want to authorize. We're just looking at this point for feedback as to what should be included in that scope.
Alderman Worth?
Well, I'm kind of disappointed on how this whole process has gone along, considering that the original resolution asking for a parking study included Town Center Two. We're taking proposals that, you know, was never competitively bid. One group gets the proposal and then just keeps adding on costs from where the original request was made for a comprehensive traffic and parking study, which was the original resolution passed by this body. So I'm getting concerned about the cost, the phasing, the fact that we, at the end of the day, are going to have a pretty massive amount built into a traffic study that I just have to believe that if it was competitively bid, would have been a lower dollar amount. And if it had been done as requested at the beginning. And so I don't know if it's too late to stop the whole process, because I find this to be, you know, I was the guy who made the proposal for a traffic and parking study in the first place, but I'm a little concerned about how this has all evolved.
Alderman.
I have similar recollection. I didn't, I know you proposed it. I ultimately didn't vote for it, but I remember that being the intent of, this traffic study was to comprehensively look at the whole area. And I think we subsequently brought it back and I ended up voting for it. I thought that's what we were getting. So it's, again, we're 50 grand into this, this will be 60 by the time we're done, and we won't even get to Phase III yet.
Phase III, which should have been the real focus of this thing.
I voted against it, of course. 50,000, I think it's $50,680 of taxpayers' money. So I went back and looked at, when I first became an alderman, our mission statement. And in our mission statement, it says, "Our success depends on our ability to offer quality and value to our taxpayers with the highest standards of accountability, responsiveness, economy, and integrity." So I thought, all right, I have a fiduciary responsibility to keep an eye on this. I didn't vote for it, but I like to keep an eye on it. So I requested from city staff, including our city administrator, to know the days in advance, the forward counting days in advance, so I could stand by as an innocent observer from the sidelines and just sort of take a look at what was going on. I was told that our city administrator said that he made the decision that I was unable to do that. I went back and asked again how that's a closed record. I got the response that he wasn't going to give me that information. I went back again a third time and a fourth time, and the fourth time I said, "I will sign a confidentiality agreement, that I will stand there quietly. Nobody will know when the dates are. I just want to verify, I have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to do this." I don't understand why an alderman could not try to see and see if it's accountable and to see exactly what's going on for our $50,680. At least that part of it. It was easy for me to figure out when one of the counts was going to be, it was going to be June 7th, because that's the municipal court date. So I looked at what are the court dates? How many average people go to court? 31. Somewhere I read that we need 39 extra parking spaces during that day. If you have 31 people going to court over an eight-hour period, there could only be about four people an hour. You don't need 39 parking spaces. I saw the 30 to 50 parking spaces that the logerman put in the original. I did not, I was not confident that we weren't paying $50,680 to get the result that we were looking for, that somebody on staff was looking for. So I'm very upset that I'm not able to, or nobody's able to, verify or stand by innocently. I was told I might skew the results by simply observing. That's quantum physics. If you observe an electron, you might, you know, affect what's happening. That's not a parking study standing out there, a gentleman looking over this. I'm not going to vote for anything to go forward unless I can verify it. And I don't believe our city attorney should block me, our city administrator should block me from doing my job. That's not his job.
May I respond? Please. Alderman Garrel, you and I have had several exchanges regarding your request for the days of the parking counts. And as city administrator, I have no interest in knowing the actual dates on which the parking counts are being conducted in advance. And frankly, I don't understand why anyone would need to have this information in advance. Accordingly, I instructed the consultant not to distribute this information to anyone, including myself or any members of the city staff or anyone else that would be requesting the days on which the parking counts were to be done in advance of those counts. Put simply, staff is attempting to ensure an independent analysis free of any bias or influence, and more importantly, the perception of any bias or influence on the part of city staff, developers, merchants, recreational users here in the Mequon Town Center and Civic Campus area, or other interested parties that may benefit from a particular outcome one way or another. Numerous stakeholder groups are interested and affected by the results. These include the city of Mequon, Mequon Town Center One businesses, the American Legion, baseball groups using Renner Key Field, who we just heard from, pool patrons, now that the pool is open, city hall patrons, who include residents of Mequon coming in to vote to attend municipal court, homeowners associations conducting their monthly or quarterly meetings here at city hall, boards and commission members who are here throughout the month at their various meetings, and residents who come in on a daily basis to pay their utility bills, their real estate taxes, to consult with the assessor's office on their property, building contractors pulling building permits, library patrons, the general public, and former alderman Leschinsky. By not knowing the exact dates of the parking counts, the city can ensure a truly random sample pursuant to the guidelines that were contained in the Phase II scope, which include, and as you've alluded to, a typical spring weekday without municipal court, a spring weekday with municipal court, a peak summer day coming up in June or July with a clear sky of at least 80 degrees temperature-wise, and then a peak summer Saturday coming up in June or early July, again with clear sky and temperature of at least 80 degrees. If the council determines here tonight that it is absolutely necessary to make this information available in advance, staff will formulate a procedure to inform the common council in accordance with the general weather parameters that have been identified, excuse me, in the scope of the Phase II parking analysis.
Question to the city attorney. Under the discussion we're currently having right now, could we have an amendment for that? Put forward one? If you so desire?
Yeah, I think you certainly could make the request of staff to include that, whether that's part of the ultimate action that's taken with respect to the kind of directive that Director Lundin has asked for specifically or separately. There's nothing wrong with making that type of request or direction as part of it. That's kind of why we're here, to get that kind of information, so.
And where is the current process on the first? Is there the contract already signed on the first, for the first study?
Second phase, but yes. The first phase is what we presented the results of last month.
Right, I mean the second phase.
The second phase, yes. Upon authorization last month, the contract was signed and authorized.
Okay.
And work has started on it?
Yes, two of the dates have already been completed for parking counts.
Alderman Garrel?
Two of the days are already counted.
Correct.
So half the study's done. Nobody was able to veri-
What about the counts?
Nobody was able to verify that. I agreed to sign a confidentiality agreement, so if our city administrator doesn't trust me, that's fine with me. But not to be able to, to take $50,680 of the taxpayers' money, who I got countless complaints about, what are you doing? Of course I'm going to try and verify it. Of course I'm going to try and make sure that the money's spent appropriately. And I don't know how you can turn around and say, well, if nobody verifies it, that you can be confident in the results. I don't know who's taking, who's doing it. Me sitting back quietly and observing it? I'm not going to vote for this. I'm not going to vote for anything that we can't be, hold somebody accountable for or at least verify the results by sitting on the sidelines. And all this stuff about, oh, these people who are interested in it, quietly sitting and watching from a distance. One person signed a confidentiality agreement, it's not going to affect the results one bit, Mr. City Administrator.
Is there, Alderman Strultrick?
I'd just like to comment. I really like the idea of it being an unbiased report. I like the idea of somebody on staff, one, maybe select person, knowing what the dates were, so they can just verify people were there counting on that day. But, you know, Alderman Garrel, with all due respect, you know, we hire staff, we hired the city administrator, we're all on that committee, as a trusted individual to run the city. And to come in and want to do the parking count on the same day that we got a hired professional to do it, I really think we're micromanaging the city staff to a level where we're covering their ability to do what they need to do for the taxpayer, we're making them inefficient. And I know that you have a desire to be here, I know you have a desire to be a hands-on alderman, and it's an admirable trait of you that you're hands-on and you're active and you're passionate. But I think in this instance, we really need an unbiased report. We need none of us interfering with the unbiased report. We need to make a policy decision here tonight as to how the report's going to be, what it's to include, so that it's the most comprehensive and best available solution for our residents. We don't need to be sitting in a parking lot, sunglasses on, counting how many cars come in and out, and then arguing the facts that we counted something different at a different time than them, if there would be a variance. I trust our city administrator, his explanation was very thorough. There's a lot of other vested groups that have financial interest in seeing how this parking study comes out. I don't know that I'm loving, and I'm agreeing with, you know, fellow aldermen, that I don't know that I'm loving the reports that are coming forward and how thorough it is, the explanation. I'd maybe like to entertain a different firm if we could do something at this point. I know it would put a rock in the road as we're trying to move forward, but I think the bigger issue is that we're struggling with something in the content versus the ability to go out and be there that day. I don't know if you disagree with me or not, but maybe you don't have confidence in this study or this firm doing the study in the manner that they're doing it. That's a policy discussion that we need to figure out tonight, and I'd invite that conversation tonight.
Alderman Hawkins?
Thank you. I, first of all, trust our staff. I think they are absolutely trustworthy. I think the first study, however, by the firm that we hired was biased. Hate to say it, I mean, that's just my personal opinion, but I would agree with Alderman Worth if he was making a motion to stop going forward, stop spending any more money on further studies. I would second that motion immediately because of the fact that I do think the study that we got was biased. I can see where another study for five times the amount is going to be biased as well. And I don't think we should be spending that money. Plus the fact that I've heard from constituents as well, and the constituents have almost entirely agreed with that proposition. What are you guys spending all that money for? We know where parking needs to go, so.
Alderman Urban?
I think at the, I can see both sides of this coin. At the core, I think the initial report using the textbook data didn't seem to correlate with people's general feel and experiences, you know, perfectly. So there's automatically a little bit of skepticism on the part of some on the council. And I think I understand the arguments for not disclosing the dates to anyone, I also understand the desire to go out and kick the tires. So I can't really say that it's wrong for an alderman to want to go see what's going on. I mean, it's a large sum of money. And I think what we don't want to do is get to the end of this, there's already skepticism on the parking study. We don't want to get to the end, because someone wasn't able to observe, there's going to be skepticism. So I can see the argument on the part of staff for keeping it private and no one knowing. I can also understand the desire to want to go see what's going on. So I don't, as long as everyone in here is man and woman enough to not disclose it and leak it, which is maybe better than we get from people in our federal government. But I don't see if there's any harm in, if people are interested to go out and see what's going on.
Alderman Worth?
We pay for this, we may as well have something we can trust, trust in in the end.
If that occurs, I'd caution that nobody can put it on their calendar, nobody can have it written down, nobody can have an email, because anything in writing would be a public record, disclosable. And there is a risk in having, I mean, you know, Alderman Garrel, I believe, believes that there's, and so do I frankly, that the parking study overstated the amount of parking There are interests that the city administrator noted that would have a, they'd benefit by getting a lot of people to come and park there during the study. If it became known the dates of the study publicly, and somebody wants to try to compel the city to build a bigger lot, a parking structure, what have you, skewing the study would be in the interests of some of the interests that the city administrator had, doing the opposite of what Alderman Garrel's looking for. I also agree with Alderman Urban, though, that I don't know that there's any harm in having an alderman look. But if we're going to do that, there has to be caution taken that it's not written down anywhere by any party employed or elected or an official of the city, because as soon as you do that, it's an open record. A consultant having it in his notes, on his calendar, whatever, it's not an open record. And so I don't know where the council will go with this, but I think if in fact, you know, we're going to authorize, you know, or have staff let an alderman know when it's going to be, it has to be under pretty tight parameters in order to not skew the study further.
Thank you. I'm in also complete agreement with Alderman Urban about the idea that there shouldn't be any issues with how this is being done, and I can't see a reason to object to an alderman that wants to follow up on this and see what's going on with as proposed a nondisclosure agreement. If something leaks out, then that person is liable for having done so. So if something comes up as an amendment, I think that that's appropriate.
I would also add that if anyone was entrusted with that info and they leaked it, I would consider that a very serious ethics violation. So there is that hanging out there. If you're entrusted with it and you, the leak is traced back to you, be prepared to suffer the consequences. But I don't, I think everyone here is trustworthy enough to take care of that information. I don't question that. I'm just saying if it did get out, there are consequences that could be sought.
Alderman Strultrick?
I just would like to reiterate, you know, whether we like this parking study in particular or not, or the approach on this parking study, I just chatted with Kim Tolson just to get a ballpark. We have about seventy-five million dollars of investment in buildings in town center. Between Town Center One, Town Center Two, Spur Sixteen will be going in the ground, some of the additional, some of those additional properties, and, and understanding the, the parking for the space and how that works interactively, I can't reiterate the value that that has as a governing body for decision-making. We really need something so that we make quantitative decisions, not opinions on haunch or I saw parking when I was there. I mean, I, I pulled in tonight, went to get a sandwich, there was one spot left, I was very fortunate to get it, I almost had to park in City Hall and walk over. But again, my opinion as an alderman, as a patron of that at the certain time, shouldn't take value over an official traffic study that really tells us how that space is working for us by somebody that's trained in it and is qualified in it and can explain it clearly. So the burden of explaining it clearly is on the traffic study. Spell it out in logical manner, here's what's gonna work, here's what's not gonna, not gonna work, here's your options, here's the approximate costs, not per piece, don't make me add up six things, 'cause I don't add up parking structures, just give me a lump sum for a parking structure on best practices. But with seventy-five million dollars of investment in people's faith in the city, people have faith in the city, they're investing seventy-five million dollars, that we're gonna do what's right in town center, and that's gonna be a thriving area? If you can't park, and we make a decision that makes that space ineffective, we failed those investors, we failed the citizens trying to get there, our fiscal responsibility is to keep those buildings at the value that they're at and increase the value over time to improve our tax bases. Fifty thousand dollars is, is, is a respectable amount of money, it's something that needs to be considered. However, that fifty thousand dollars is going into effective decision-making. If this tool isn't the tool for us, it's not working. Alderman Worth, I've heard you, and I agree with you, and I've struggled with it as well, and I agree with you a hundred percent, if you wanna pull it, I'd second it, and, you know, send it out to bid. I don't know if this is the tool that's working for me. Alderman Gil, we've had objections, uh, because you wanna review it, I'm, I'm wondering if that isn't because maybe we just don't have faith in this particular study or approach, you know? I'd wanna sit and watch, too, if I didn't have faith in something as well. But it's a seventy-five million dollar investment of other people's money in that area, and we gotta respect that as we move forward. So some parking study should be done, please.
Kristen?
So, so to that point, when the scope was before this body last month, we never got to that portion of the discussion. We never got to the discussion as to whether or not this committee would prefer a alternate consideration for how the parking demand could have been accommodated. There are many other methods aside from just going out into the parking lot and count, counting cars that could have been used. Obviously, they come with varying degrees of expense and varying degrees of, um, critique in terms of the methodology bet- between analysis. There could be consideration of drone photography that would be identified for particular times of day, much like they were in the scope of services here, but that would be a document that could be provided to the entirety of the body, that everyone could count individually and have the same picture of the same snapshot in time and the same counts that are used for that analysis. That is one. There's also the consideration of, and John'll have to correct me if I'm using incorrect terms here, but the potential of doing that through time-lapse data as well, that if you're not looking for just a snapshot in time, and you want a time-lapse accumulation over time, that you can also define that. There's the technology in place, it can either be done with drones, or we have the, all of ownership of the adjacent buildings with the exception of MTC One, where we could consider implementing the technology to consider that. But none of that was the direction that we got last month. So if that's what the committee was looking for, that would have been a productive conversation for us to be able to bring forward those options for consideration, whether that was through TADI or another consultant. So if that is something that the committee would like to discuss, then we would be happy to sit here and discuss the potential as to whether we need to take a timeout on where we are, discuss what those options are, and accept the direction from the committee as to how you would like us to move forward, because the last thing that we are interested in doing is bringing forward a study in August that none of you have any faith in.
Alderman Gil?
I think it would be appropriate to do a type of, uh, RFP, I mean, I, I saw, I wrote the little piece and had the little flyer on the, on the mountain lion. And, you know, they, the DNR didn't go send out some bunch of people out in the woods go looking for a mountain lion, and I knew the police department wouldn't do it. When a hunter wants to know if there's something in the area, they put up a trail camera. It's simple. And you get it all right there. And I noticed that John Lashinsky did the same thing, put up trail cameras. And it, it monitors everything. We can do this much less expensively with good data on the counting side of it. On top of that, I went and talked to two professors whose interns could do this, a big chunk of it, eight bucks an hour when they're doing the actual count, and they would break it down into pieces, one of them said it'd be around ten thousand dollars, the next one said maybe fifteen. So I really think we need to put this out for an RFP, or at least go and look and kick the tires before we continue to spend this kind of money going forward, especially when we don't have the confidence in the results going forward.
And I'd just like to clarify two things. Number one, staff's not suggesting any of this because of our lack of confidence, but we'll take the direction from the committee, and the only other thing that we'd have to accept is that we did authorize a contract and we did sign it, so we do have a, an accumulation of expenses associated with that, that the city would be responsible for on top of whatever the committee directs us for in moving forward.
Alderman Worth?
Well, we certainly need to pay for the work that's already been done. I, I don't think, I would hope there's nobody here who would argue with that. But I guess I would, I would move that we, um, cancel the contract for the current parking study. Then we continue our discussion here on what our options are. But I'd start with that motion.
Second. We got a motion in a second to Alderman Strout?
Cancel contract and move forward with discussion. I'll give you a yes vote on that if you say cancel the contract and move forward with RFPs for a new consultant.
Well, yeah, I might, well, my goal-
But just discussion on whether or not we wanna do it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on it tonight, so if you wouldn't mind a friendly amendment, that would be appropriate if that's acceptable for what you meant. I'd like to see a parking study.
The intention would still be to do a parking study, is my motion.
Alderman-
Whether, how we do that and what that is, but I still think we need a study.
So to bring us back a few weeks, I think we have a proposal for a restaurant that's contingent on finishing a parking study. And also a proposal for a potential gift of some to-be-determined improvements on the part of Foxstone Ventures that's also now contingent on finishing a parking study. What are the implications for canceling the study? We could choose to modify what we're doing going forward. I frankly think after seeing the time-lapse photography, which we didn't talk about last time, 'cause frankly, it wasn't presented to us for consideration, so we didn't think about it. Shame on us, I guess. But I found that time-lapse photography very informative, and in, you, in a minute or two, you can see a whole day's worth of data, you can get these cameras for just a few hundred dollars, and you can accumulate a month of time-lapse video for next to no cost. And you don't have to worry about which day you're gonna go out, 'cause you're gonna get a whole month, rain or shine, you can get a whole month worth of data, and you can go back and crunch the data then, if you have the right camera angle. I'm not sure I'd support canceling it, but maybe just modifying the direction of where we're going and get, maybe getting revised cost, draw a line in the sand where we're at now, and keep going forward, 'cause otherwise it's gonna be a, another month, and maybe we'll figure something out, and then it'll be another month, and before you know it, we're gonna, I didn't vote for the restaurant, but we're gonna lose the restaurant, 'cause we're frankly dragging this out so darn long, you'll just, the developer will just get sick of the process and pull out, and then we'll be forced with the decision of what to do with Logoman ourselves, which was the whole point of considering an RFP in the first place, so we didn't have to deal with it ourselves, 'cause it was gonna cost a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So.
You got a motion to cancel the contract and review actions, um, what does that actually mean, Alderman? I mean, besides canceling the contract?
Well, I mean, we're, we're having a discussion, well, that was one part, and then we'd have a second motion perhaps after that on what to do after further discussion, we're having that further discussion now. I guess I'm, I'm intrigued by what Alderman Urban's saying, but I guess I'd like to understand what you're saying.
Well, the, the mechanics are, we have to probably have another half hour of debate, and that's okay, I've got nothing else to do tonight. But, um, notionally, here's what it would look like, you just, we've got two days of data, physical traffic counts, fine. Put that in the bank, we've already paid for it anyway, right? We're not arguing about not paying for stuff that's, costs that are incurred, we can't do that. Shouldn't even discuss it anymore. But going forward, going with the approach with getting good vantage points for cameras in the, in the area, I think the, the communications tower is a awesome bird's-eye view for all the lots that the city owns. Maybe if you aim it the right way, it can even pick up most of Town Center One's parking, maybe Town Center One will be good sports and let us put a camera there, I don't know. There's some good high, high railings, maybe a private resident who owns one of the balconies would let us put, put one up. But then you can put cameras up for a month and get a whole cornucopia of data on different days, different conditions.
Who are you suggesting puts the cameras up, and, I mean, what the mechanics of what you're suggesting, I guess?
Can I?
Please.
Can I just add some clarification? So i- if the decision is to cancel the contract and move forward with an RFP, and that RFP is to include the actual data collection, we will lose the peak season of data collection. If that's the direction that you wanted to go, we would request consideration of the ability, and I will say this, not having a whole lot of ideas to the financial implications, but actually ask for authority for staff to purchase the equipment so that we can get it in place immediately, and that we would RFP the analysis of that data, because if we have to wait for an RFP to gather the time-lapse data, I'm going to lose the majority of time associated with that, but we could consider, depending on the direction of the committee, having staff move forward with that and then providing that data to the consultant for analysis.
I'm not even suggesting at this point we need a different consultant, I just think that we've got a couple of days left, there's interest from some to go out and observe what's going on, if there's time-lapse video, we can all look at the video when it's all done. That alleviates that issue, we're gonna, if you, for a thousand dollars, you're gonna get all the cameras you need. I, I priced these things out, it, it's almost so cheap I would consider buying them myself, but. You'll, you'll get thirty days' worth of data, and then we can, we can do the analysis on that data. 'Cause you don't have to pay someone to sit there, you can just stop the video every interval you're gonna count it, count the, count the cars and do your analysis.
Which, which is true, although to be clear, the analysis is different from a cycle of four days versus a time lapse, but I'm, I'm not disagreeing with the merits of everyone then being provided that data to be able to verify the authenticity.
I would just agree in saying that if the concern of the committee is the possibility even remote of the data being skewed or misinterpreted in some way, that having a documented and retrievable study like we are describing now would, I think, put everyone's mind at ease.
Uh, we beating this thing up, or are we about ready to take a vote on this thing at all, or?
I got one question.
Alderman Strout?
Consultant?
Yes.
Can you do cameras?
Yes, we do.
Can you get Kristen a dollar figure, or do you have one at the tip of your tongue right now?
We can provide that, the only issue with the video or photography is really the battery life of the units. So what we have to do is go out there and switch batteries every so hour, you know, a couple hours to do that. The only issue with cameras is that it's a much more visible presence out in the field, people know, ask what we're doing, why we're setting up cameras, what the camera's doing, so it hides the, hides the confidentiality of the-
We're looking to leave them out there, we're not looking to just put them up one day, take them down, we're looking to leave them out there and have them plugged in. Yes?
We can, we can certainly do that.
Battery life's concerned, perhaps solar panels. I kept my car trickle-charged all winter with a solar panel. I didn't, I didn't bat an eye, I rested easy the whole winter, worked, started up beautifully in the spring.
Okay, what does the committee wanna do?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make one last appeal here. We've had a lot of discussion, and we're into a contract that we have executed with the consultant, and as the Public Works Director pointed out, we are in the midst of the peak season where the pool has just opened. We've got baseball going out on Reniki Field almost on a daily basis. This is to, this is the time to do these counts. And if we amend the contract, or we cancel the contract, or we take it out to RFP, we are going to be missing an opportunity, and that is gonna impact our ability to keep this process moving along, which is a message that staff heard loud and clear when we were back talking about a parking study in the March-April timeframe. What I'm gonna propose is that we no longer consider the Phase Two amendment that was brought forth here tonight, so there's no additional outlay of any money. We keep the contract going that we signed so that we can continue to get the counts and the data, and we keep the process moving along. We hold off on any further consideration of Phase Three until we get the actual results from the analysis. And remember, this is not only a parking analysis, this is also a traffic circulation analysis. That's the second piece to the fifty thousand dollars that we're spending here. And if there's a show of hands indicating that the council's will is for staff to release, or the consultant to release, the last two dates on which parking counts will be done here in the June-July timeframe, we will come up with a mechanism to make that work and get that information to you. I would lastly point out that this parking study is the basis for making not only decisions on the restaurant proposal that we're considering here and now in early 2017, but we're also gonna be talking about, uh, the condition of our public community pool at some point. And having this parking data now is going to be useful and valuable information as we engage in capital upgrade discussions longer term for the city. Also, the condition of our City Hall parking lot, which is in dire need of some upgrades and some drainage improvements. So I would throw that out there as kind of a middle-ground compromise to keep the process moving and ultimately get you the data that you need to make decisions without spending another dime beyond what we've committed to since, since this evening.
Alderman Worth?
That middle-ground compromise sounds, other than allowing maybe Alderman Gil or somebody to look at it, not really a compromise, it sounds like exactly what we're currently doing. I don't see that as a whole lot of compromise. I don't believe that the study is meaningful without including Town Center Two, because if Town Center Two is going to add traffic to this area-
Just continuation.
You know, the, the whole basis of that first thing sho- the first study showed us these concentric circles at four hundred feet and eight hundred feet, and Town Center Two is within those circles from the Logoman Center parking lot. You're kinda putting blinders on and saying, we're gonna ignore this piece over here, which back in March was what we directed, that it was supposed to be the whole thing. I'm not in favor of doing any study unless it's going to be comprehensive and include that parcel somehow, and integrate what's the demand based on the, the approvals that there have been for Town Center Two into, or the potential demand, into what's going to happen at, at Logoman, at the Town Center One, at the pool, at the, because if there, if, if the approvals that are there and are anticipated, or they're forthcoming, are going to mean that there's parking spilling over, we need to know that now. I, I don't, I don't get why this is something that keeps getting carved off, this is one fairly large, you know, it could have the same impact on Logoman that Town Center One has on Logoman, and both of them could have an impact on the pool, the library, and what have you. I also, you know, if we're not going to do Phase Three of some sort, um, now that maybe that's something that could be done in-house, I'm not sure.
We agree.
But I, I, I think you have to do Town Center Two. Now whether that's taking the time-lapse cameras to get- Now whether that's taking the time lapse cameras to get the data for Town Center One and the Civic Campus, and adding to that somehow melding in projections for Town Center Two, that would make sense. But short of that, I find the whole process to be worthless.
I was about to suggest the same thing. Find a way within, I don't even know what we're at on the odometer on the fifty thousand six hundred some odd dollars. Presumably, we're halfway through it, big gross terms. If there's a way to fold in getting some sort of estimation of what Town Center Two will, how that'll impact the area we're considering, and altering our method to use time lapse cameras other than physical people on the ground counting cameras, or counting cars, if there's a way to do that within the originally allocated budget, I think, well, Alderman left, I think he's interested in actually potentially voting for that, you'd be picking up the.
I think that, though, what you just said is a huge distinction from what we were understanding that the potential inclusion of SPUR-16 is. If all you're looking for is an account for what spill over or shared trips there may be from MTC Two on the influence of the Civic Campus, that's wholeheartedly completely different than an analysis of SPUR-16 and whether or not they're including adequate parking.
I don't think we ever directed staff to look at SPUR-16 by itself, just the interplay with this specific site, because it's conveniently right in the middle of everything.
Well, and I'll take responsibility for it not being included in the original scope. I'm the one that worked with TADI on the original scope. But that is exactly why we're back before you tonight, is so that we can understand exactly what the intent is of including SPUR-16, so that when the analysis is complete, at least the form of the analysis is meeting your expectation.
I think we fully expect there to be spill over from one site to the next. Like if I go to SPUR-16 and go to a restaurant, and I wanna go somewhere else to go get a drink later because I wanna change a venue, I'm not gonna pick up my car and move, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk. And I think that's the, that's what everyone's looking for, I think. I don't know. Someone other than Alderman Worth will have to comment, because.
Well, here, first of all, I mean, the city staff just did what we directed them to do, you know? And what I'm, one of my comments was beforehand, we were talking about, you know, the Phase Two inside of it, was the fact that, I know other Alderman made the same comment, was the fact that all we see is parking, and obviously parking a lot of apartments and not a lot of retail over there. And to try to get a parking analysis now from not really knowing what type of businesses are going in, I mean, it's, it's kind of fruitless also, because of the fact that you don't, you know, who would have known that Kathy Hollander would have drawn that much traffic inside of the area? You can have some other restaurant that doesn't draw that much, you know? So, you really need to know what's gonna be going in to get some of those numbers together for it. A traffic analysis, I could see just by the impact of having the apartments and stuff like that in conjunction with the two. But including SPUR-16 inside of the parking analysis, I don't think that we really need to have that inside of it. That's just my opinion, because of the fact, like I said before, when I took a look at it and we saw the stuff, it, my complaint was that all you saw was parking inside of it, you didn't see enough retail. So I think that while there may be a little bit of interplay inside of it for it, we need to get this thing moving forward, one way or the other. We've got developers and civic people that are possibly putting some money into the area over there. We keep dragging our feet and trying to get, and trying to decide something, we thought we did, now we haven't. Now we're cutting off a contract if we vote that way. And we'll be two months down the road and still not have a decision for these people that are waiting on stuff. Alderman Girl.
On the fifty thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, I'm pretty certain that, you know, we're not twenty-five thousand into it. I think you've collected the data on a couple counts by now, and you'll probably get a couple more, and by the end of summer, you'll have two more counts to go along with that, and then have to do the analysis on that, and that's where another chunk of the cost will come in. So just for the two counts, I don't believe we're at twenty-five thousand, but we're in the 21st century now. We gotta take advantage of the technology that's available. If we turned around and said, "All right, we're going to, let's just switch over and start doing trail cameras," like John Lashinsky did, for a thousand dollars, and you set them up, and you can have those set up in a day or two, we can start counting cars right away, every single day, you know, all the way through. Those can be set up, and you might get forty-five different counts, or fifty different counts by the end of summer. We're gonna be well ahead of waiting for the next two counts to come in. And then we have data that is, we see every day. We get to see it, we get to verify it, we're comfortable with the results of it. So, you know, my feeling is, is I think it's a, we take advantage of the technology that's out there, and then on top of that, I mean, anything bad ever happens, and the police will have right on their trail cameras. So, so we have an added benefit. So, we can move forward just as fast and faster with the, with the time lapse cameras as we can with waiting for the parking and the traffic counts. We can move just as fast, and we'll have more data, more accurate data, data that we're comfortable with, data that we're confident in, and nobody's gonna be coming out there every single day trying to up the count if they don't know which of this, you know, if they're counting forty-five days or sixty days or whatever. And we're, we're only, what, we're at June 13th? So we can get these things, you can get these things up and running by, you know.
End of the week.
End of the week.
We have a motion before us, and a second.
Which one? The one to cancel?
Yeah, please repeat the motion. I mean, please repeat, yeah.
The motion is to cancel the contract and review actions and options.
Alderman Worth.
We're doing the second part. I was suggesting bifurcating, which perhaps we're not doing since we're going through those options right now, and maybe the, I guess I'm gonna withdraw the motion, because I think we need to find a motion that works. I would like to.
So there's withdrawal of the motion?
Yeah.
And there's withdrawal of the second?
Second.
I'd like to refute the chairman's comments about the Phase Two study. There is some commercial approved, at least in the development agreement. I do believe that there are ranges that can be, you know, estimated based on, you know, if it's used this way, it's this, used that way, that's that. The developer of SPUR-16 has indicated that there are at least some prospective tenants, and that information could be used in looking at Phase Two. But also, you know, how much space is there? In doing the calculations based on our ordinance, I'm concerned that you couldn't build more commercial other than what was originally included in the development agreement than that there is, but I may be totally wrong. You know, staff's numbers, though, would indicate that, if I remember correctly, that we're budding up on, you know, it would take a variance, or, you know, some sort of a, looking at the parking requirements and modify them for, as part of the PUD or what have you, in order to build additional commercial there. But there still is a projection of additional commercial. So, I'm concerned, where do those people park? And I think it all ties together. And if you're going to totally ignore the biggest, you know, development, I understand that residential's probably pretty taken care of by underground parking, and that's less of a concern, but, you know, is there enough parking for the projected commercial? Without knowing that, I don't know that you can, that the rest of this, without at least factoring that in somehow, I don't know that the rest of this has a whole lot of merit.
Is it your turn?
If I can jump in and maybe step outside of my typical legal counsel role, it seems to me that you folks are struggling with an issue that really has kind of two prongs to it. The first part of the prong is perhaps some level of uncertainty with this consult. If that uncertainty exists, my recommendation to you is cancel the contract. We'll deal with the consequences, we'll figure it out, but be done with it. If your, if your uncertainty is with this consult and the work that they're going to provide, you are never going to be happy, no matter what happens. So just cancel the contract, we'll deal with the consequences, and figure it out. Now that said, I think personally that is unfounded. This is a firm that I have seen both on my position as a municipal council with, I don't know, probably a hundred and fifty different developments of all different sizes, where he's been involved, talking about traffic and parking and everything else. Before my time as a municipal lawyer, as a guy who was helping some development lawyers, he was involved in probably another twenty or thirty projects that I was involved in. Remember that at the end of the day, he is a P, I believe. So he does have a license through the state that, you know, he has certain ethical standards, just as I do, to make sure that he is living up to. But, all of that said, if that level of distrust is there, just cancel the contract. Because no matter what the answer is at the end of the day, no matter how many hoops we jump through, if you're not gonna be happy with the result that's coming from this consult, you are wasting your money. Now, that said, the solution, in my opinion, is not to take any action tonight. John, how long would it take you to get a number? If we were gonna do, let's just say we wanted to, on those two days that we were gonna do the subsequent traffic counts, if we were gonna do, instead of just a pure traffic count as we've been doing it, if we were going to do a time lapse for the whole day on both of those days, how long would it take you to get a cost on that?
Than a day.
So, he can get us a response yet this week, schedule a special meeting for next week, you get your answer, you figure out whether this is something that is acceptable to you, maybe you talk about additional days, or whatever additional terms that you want, you know, add some more days, add a week, or whatever. Find out what the actual cost is gonna be in order to get it done to your satisfaction, come back next week and consider it at a special meeting. But remember that at the end of the day, your decision, if you choose to cancel and walk away and move to somebody else, as Director Lundin has indicated, results in a long delay in doing this. Not just collecting the counts. Yes, certainly, we can go out and buy a trail camera and put it up and start getting counts probably tomorrow. But remember that we still would need to go through an RFP process in order to get a consult to crunch that data, to put together a report and everything else. So you're talking probably a good couple months in order for us to even get to the point where we've got somebody that's on board. All the while, you have former Alderman Lashinsky and his proposal in place, you have the folks, the Fox Town Ventures folks that are likewise interested. You know, time does play a role here. And that's why I think that your solution is, if there is a level of at least basic trust, it's just a matter of seeking to have that verification. Call timeout, we'll come back in a week and actually get it done right.
Alderman.
So, with that said, now we had a committee of the whole scheduled for next week, and now it was unscheduled, now we can schedule again with a different agenda item. Propose deferring a decision tonight and having numbers come back on what it would take to, and I'll give some general guidance. Continue with the study, shift to the time lapse photography method. Hopefully, we get more than just two more days out of that, because you can put the camera up and leave it there for a week if you want. And the batteries will probably last a week, I'm not, not certain. I would, presumably, that's a little cheaper than paying people to physically count cars. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I would like to try and give the general guidance to keep it within the original cost that was approved of the fifty thousand six hundred dollars.
To be clear, that answer can be pretty short. If we have a consultant do that, it is not cheaper.
To put up cameras, putting up cameras one time is more expensive than paying people to go out and count cars.
You're still, you're still paying people to count cars, is whether you're doing it onsite or behind a video screen. And the issue, additional cost is really the time to set up the cameras, the time to maintain them, switch batteries out, go back and forth, take the cameras down, process data, then actually count it on a screen. It's much quicker, more efficient to actually go on the field and physically count the cars while you're walking around or checking out the data. We can certainly do it. I don't wanna, you know, discourage you, but it's just, it will be more expensive.
And likewise, I would only point out if the subsequent discussion is going to be a city investment, I just want to remind everyone that the scope was not only to include City Hall parking lot, and Logoman parking lot, and MTC One, and Cedarburg Road, and the library parking lot. So, that's multiple cameras, which if that's what's authorized, that can be considered. But we're not gonna be able to find a singular camera that's going to be able to pick up all of those locations.
We have cameras that could do that. What they do is they go on telescoping poles, they're about twenty, thirty feet high, they shoot down. So we can do that, there's just additional cost involved with that.
I liked the idea when it came up of the cameras, and I definitely like the idea that of the city being able to purchase those cameras and implement them, because then when this comes up again as a follow-up study two years from now, or another location, those cameras are readily available and can be used. And then a month later, two months later, months later, after an RFP goes out for somebody who's gonna analyze the data, the data will be available to them to analyze. And I don't think that would be, in this particular case, a drag on the timeline, because we're already looking a couple months out for accounts to be done. So if we have, can start collecting data this week, we're already gonna have multiple days coming in. So I really like the idea of purchasing those cameras and starting to implement those for future purposes.
So is the committee holds direction then to have the contractor?
Well, I, knowing that there's gonna be significant more expense to go have the contractor put up the cameras, we could probably pay for our own cameras. So I guess I'd.
But I don't know if that's the point, because as we were talking about beforehand, we have multiple areas that we're looking to get the counts on, correct?
The particular make and model of the camera that was used to generate the time lapse photography that we were all emailed on is like two hundred and fifty dollars.
And I'm just clarifying that I have not been privy to the video, so I don't know what the scope of the lens is. I'm just clarifying that the parameters of the study included the entirety of Cedarburg Road, the library parking lot, City Hall parking lot, Logoman Center parking lot, and MTC One parking lot. So I cannot speak to the number of cameras that would be required to provide that coverage.
Probably half a dozen.
And as we did it at, and as we did it at our place when we had construction, we had time lapse so we could watch the whole construction and condense it down. You know, we had to duplicate the cameras just in case of failure. You gotta remember, that can happen also inside of them. So you're not just having one camera, you have it out there for X amount of, for a month trying to get that inside of it, and also you pull it back and you find out that it's not, not recording properly inside of it. And that does happen.
If I could address some of the issues regarding, the big issue with cameras is really your corner vision. You wanna capture the biggest, widest area that you can. We have bird's eye lenses on our cameras, which captures a large area. And we usually use video, because video gives the whole story, not just a little snapshot in time. So we can capture hours and hours of video, and we can definitely do that. We can do that with probably about six or seven cameras with telescoping in the sky looking down. Again, the only issue with that is.
In each area?
Yes, we can. So we have probably two cameras, MTC One, two cameras at City Hall, Logoman, scattered throughout. But keep in mind that there will be cameras set up throughout the area. People will be asking questions, what's going on, why are you doing this? It somewhat takes away the confidentiality of when this is all occurring. We can keep those cameras up for a week and only record specific days, we could definitely do that. We can do a lot of different things to address people's concerns about it, but I'm just explaining what we can do. Another thing we can do is we can use drones, we've used drones before. Issue with drones is you have to pay a pilot to have those drones hover over a certain area for a certain period of time, which you have to pay a pilot to do that. There's also an issue with drones is that with drones, you can only have about a twenty to forty minute battery life of hovering in one spot. So we have what's called tethered drones, in other words, have a line going up to that drone, holding it in place, and we can do that for days and hours, but it's more cost, it's a much larger. But, it's more cost, it's a much larger way of doing things, and it's not the most cost effective. It is cool, it is neat, gives you all the data, there's no arguments about the data, but it is the most expensive option.
Alderman, go.
I know I talked a lot tonight, but I've been, I use five or six trail cameras when I hunt. I set them up, and I run five or six of them at a time, different areas, know what's coming through, know what's going on. Never caught a mountain lion on one, but see a lot of other stuff. So, you know, at $200 a camera and you've set up two on each pole, you know, it's five, setting up 10 cameras there at five different locations is not difficult to do. It's not difficult at all to do. And it's exactly what John Lashinsky did, and it's exactly what I do. I set mine up out in the woods. So in doing that and getting it, so you have two of them in one spot in case one doesn't work, and you go out there once a week and you check on them. Or you can go out there every day and you check on them if you want to, but, you know, they run pretty flawlessly, the technology is outstanding, a lot better than it was three, four years ago. So setting this up and having staff do it and saving the money on the count is, is just 21st century technology taking advantage of it and being efficient with taxpayers' money and our resources.
Alderman Hawkins.
Well, I still don't like the fact that we already authorized the contract, but that's going to happen, we've already paid for it. I do like the fact that you are going to move to the time lapse photography. I think that'll provide an unbiased count of the number of cars that are moving in and out of different locations in the area. I do have, and I have from the beginning, since I started researching the different establishments, industry standards, you represent ITE, and the ITE people, that's not the name of your company, I know, but you're using the ITE manual, correct?
That's correct, if you use manual, yes.
That's not the name of your establishment. But I'm getting back to the Bible, ITE is referred to as the Bible of the industry. However, in my research, I found out there were other Bibles that different companies use.
That is correct.
And as an example, I've got a document that tells me that a restaurant, including outdoor docks patio and or eating, requires eight spaces for every 1,000 square feet. But a bar, club, or lounge requires 10.0 spaces for every 1,000 square feet. I've, that struck me because we had an analysis, we being the city of McQuan and the village of Deansville in August of 2005, and you reference this a little bit in your report, your first report, but we have skippies at 7,395 square feet being, by zoning, required to have five parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, plus one employee, plus one per employee, okay? Then you had Remingtons, and this is before they added the expanded parking lot across the street, which now gives them an additional, I think, 35 parking spaces. But they were coming in in 2005 at 4,050 square feet and were required to have four parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, plus one per employee. Okay, you did reference, this was back in 2005, we're talking about our town center, which has different traffic patterns, obviously. But I would like to see a more detailed explanation in your report that we're going to see coming up next of all the different establishments in the town center, based on what? Is it going to be based on square footage?
Well, no, now it's going to be based on parking counts.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Is it going to be based on the parking spaces required? That's what I'm asking. Parking spaces required, are they going to be based on square footage or employees or what? And you're saying we don't...
No, that was completed as a part of Phase One. Phase Two will be based upon parking counts, not based upon square footage.
Right. The difference between the theoretical, this is what, on average, we would typically expect to see of a restaurant of 4,000 square feet versus the, this is what this establishment actually uses. And we do that by actually doing the physical parking count. So, the theoretical, you know, X number of spots per 1,000 square feet is the average, so to speak. The stuff we're talking about in Phase Two is the specific, what they actually use.
And then...
Which may or may not be the average.
Well, is it also going to show what they're going to be required to have?
No.
No.
How do you determine what a, an estat, we'll call it an establishment, because I've got, in the 2005 study, Willbrook Place, some of these aren't even around anymore, dental care, Pigeon Creek Antiques, and a whole list of different establishments. How are you going to determine?
You don't. That's what we suggested, if you wanted to, that Phase Three could consider an analysis of the zoning code to determine whether we're requiring sufficient parking, but that was concluded as a part of Phase One. We're no longer looking at the tabletop exercise, we're no longer looking at square footages based on types of use. Now we're looking at actual counts, actual use, actual cars.
So what you're getting out of this is really, how much excess parking supply do we have at certain times of the day? What more development can we accommodate with our current parking supply? Or, how much more parking spaces do we need to add to accommodate new development and how much?
So, you're not talking about adding any buildings other than SPUR 16 that we don't know?
We haven't really gotten direction on that.
Correct.
All right.
So what are we looking at?
What about Backwoods?
Yes.
Yes.
So what we're doing, just to clarify, first of all, we're establishing what is our existing conditions today. Essentially, how bad is it? What time of the day are bad, summer, weekend, weekday, what have you, school in session, school not in session, court in session, court not in session, all these parameters we look at. We take a look at the data and tell us, is there enough parking for today's conditions in these certain areas or not? If there is, fine, if there isn't, we'll address it. The next question is, if Backwoods comes in, how much more parking do they need? And the question is, how much parking is currently available for them to use for what's currently there now, if any? Likewise, the same thing with redeveloping the pool, redeveloping the baseball diamond. If that happens, how much more parking would that require? And that, can that be accommodated with the current parking supply we have now? Or, how much parking do we need to add to accommodate that?
Okay, so after about an hour and a half here, here is where we're currently at. We are still, we have an aid of direction here whether we're going to drop the contract or keep the contract, number one. Number two is that we have not indicated whether or not we want to have an Alderman requesting the information of the next dates to be given that. And also, we have not come to the discussion yet of SPUR 16 being included, or Second Phase, being included inside of that. So, is there any direction from...
Motion.
The committee?
How to craft that?
Yes, all the person turn.
I, given what I've heard about the time commitment it would take to get RFPs for new folks to do a parking study for us, I think that is not a good option. I think we should move forward with the folks we have, and maybe we'll be more comfortable with a different mechanism for gathering the data. One of the things I'd be questioning is, would the additional expense be just related to getting a lot more data, using cameras, for instance? Or is it the cameras themselves? Because obviously, if we are doing time lapse over long periods of time, that there's going to be a bigger time commitment in counting and analyzing the data. And I know you don't have this information at your fingertips this minute because we didn't ask for it, but that is one of my, that's my question in general.
We do have the cameras in-house, so that's not an issue as far as cost of the cameras. The cost is the additional cost of setting it up, maintaining them, processing the data. We will still do the parking counts on foot or basically live, but we'll also have the videos backup. So if anyone has questions or concerns, we have the video to illustrate what we did.
Is it necessary, in your opinion, to have both of those elements? Meaning, is it necessary to have boots on the ground if you're doing the cameras?
We do, primarily because all this technology is great. However, with all these cameras in place, the chances of one failing or one battery dying early is a possibility. And if we miss that perfect day because of a equipment function, we lost that day. So...
Can I suggest maybe we break down some of these so that we can move forward? If I...
Sure.
If I may. So first, I guess we'd look for whether we want to continue with manual parking counts or whether we'd consider time lapse video. Please, for the time, just that, not who will conduct the time lapse video, just whether we will continue with manual parking counts or whether we should change to time lapse video.
Video.
Let's throw hands, video?
Video.
Video. That's on the cost.
Okay.
So it's video.
So if we're moving forward with time lapse video, we'll have TADI stop with any continued parking counts. Can I assume that if we move forward with time lapse video, that resolves the discussion about disclosure of parking dates? Because the videos would be made available to everyone.
Of course. So hands.
Okay. So now the next question is, who should conduct the collection of the time lapse data? Whether we want to ask TADI to provide us with a scope or whether we want the city to purchase, set up, maintain, and everything else that I've never done before, but we'll Google quickly on my way home if this is the direction of the committee.
I think we need to get a price on that from them.
Okay. Which we can do, to be clear, we can do both. I mean, it sounds like Alderman, Nurbek can provide me with some information. We can try and understand the extent of how many cameras we would need if it was a city purchase, what the level of effort and everything would be so that we can get an idea as to what that cost would be and also get a cost from TADI.
Just a question, you don't have to disclose the date, how close are we to the next one?
Well, as of now, we're not doing another one.
I know, but I mean, how close were we, let's say, to the next one?
We haven't voted on that yet.
Pretty close.
Well, don't say, if we're not, at this point, if we're not, if we're going to go back to that, I don't, I don't want us to have disclosed a date and then have decided that that wasn't what was going to be.
Not asking for the date.
The date's probably going to rain anyway. It's highly weather dependent.
We're getting close.
Could I just clarify one more thing?
So we'll come back to the committee with those two costs. Now, I guess the question is, the mechanism for you to make a decision as to how we should proceed then with that? That we should be able to get you those two prices in pretty short order, but you're going to need to make a decision and then authorize us as to how we should move forward.
Well, we have the meeting set up for next week.
We do.
So should we move to table this until next Tuesday?
Except, don't table quite yet, because I have a couple other things so that I can be sure that we're delivering everything that you're looking for. But, but if, if the understanding is that we would deliver those in times for you to make a decision next Tuesday at, correct? That was the meeting day, I already took it off my calendar. So, okay, so next Tuesday. So, we will have the costs of both of those. Now, in the interest of trying, trying to streamline some of the conversations about as to whether or not SPUR 16 should be included in the analysis, I heard some conversation that that was just to try and understand what the influence of SPUR 16 would be on the Civic Campus and Logoman Center parking lots. And I heard some discussion about wanting to have a, an evaluation or the tabletop exercise as to whether MTC Two is providing sufficient parking. If we have further scope for you to actually act on, will you be prepared next Tuesday to make a decision as to how we should move forward?
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm not quite sure I understand, didn't...
So we heard...
What are you committing this to?
What I'm essentially saying is...
Where did Town Center Two go?
I'm sorry?
You, you kind of gave two different concepts about Town Center Two.
Yeah, so there was, there was some conversation that the idea of including SPUR 16 was to get an account of shared trips. So in other words, what the impact of SPUR 16 is on the Civic Campus parking lot, but not an analysis of whether or not SPUR 16 is providing sufficient parking for its own uses. So that was what...
It almost has to do one or the other, if it's got plenty of parking for its own use, then it's probably not making a significant impact on, on the other parcels.
Well, no, I think, well, I think the idea is, given the neighborhood development of Town Center, that there are going to be park, people that park in various parts of Town Center and then walk between the various uses. So, I don't know as though it has to do as much with... This is what we're trying to get to. If the question is whether SPUR 16 has sufficient parking and in the assumption maybe that there's not, that that would have an impact on the Civic Campus and Town Center, that's a different scope of analysis than asking that the scope of, that we currently have for the influence ending at the railroad tracks, asking that that include the assumption that there is some shared trips from MTC Two. And we didn't get a decision tonight, I guess, as to which of those. And so what I'm suggesting is, while we had kind of bullet pointed some of these, that we would work to have actual scopes before the committee next week so that we could have the decision and conclusion as to how we want to move forward.
Well, I understood and heard what you said, but I'm not sure the, the impact of Town Center Two or SPUR 16 on Logoman and, and the other Town Center uses or the Civic Campus uses, it will make a difference if there is enough parking on Town Center Two or not enough parking on Town Center Two.
Right. But I guess this is where the divide, where the divide was in the conversation. So we could have actual scope that goes through those different versions, and then that would be before you for a decision and you can direct us how to move forward.
Okay, my comment to the council, not a question for you, is, I think we need that. I don't think, I think the...
Well, I think she's saying she's going to be bringing it forward for the next call.
Yeah, I'll bring it, I guess I'm just looking to allow you to get to the other agenda and all the other department heads that are cursing me right now. So, so because we didn't come to a consensus tonight, that we would attempt to come to the consensus next Tuesday, but that instead of a bullet pointed list, we would have some definitive scope so that you could all see it and make sure that it is accommodating what you're asking for, there'll just be a couple versions of it for you to vet through based on, on maybe the divide and conversation that we had.
So she's going to give us the information so we can make the decision.
Got it.
And so, yes.
And then, just for maybe an item that we won't bring up next week, that with the promise that upon the results of Phase Two and the identification of whether or not there is additional parking demand, that we would just continue the discussion about parking improvements. We just heard some critique last month that all we were doing was spending all of our time and money analyzing whether or not there's a problem. And as staff, we just wanted to reassure everyone that the goal certainly would be moving towards a solution. So whether that's an in-house exercise that staff does to be able to evaluate additional parking and where that could be identified, or whether that's an actual Phase Three scope of services that would be done by a consultant, we're just trying to reassure the body that that's what we're trying to get to and that that is an effort that we would look for, both at the no-cost options and the varying degrees therein. So I would propose that we not bring back any discussion about a Phase Three scope next week.
Agreed, yes?
Well, I, I'd still like to have a ballpark concept of what it would cost to have a consultant or this consultant give us some direction in Phase Three.
Okay.
We keep working towards that, and that won't be part of our decision-making next week, but, you know, it'd be nice to have an idea of what this overall cost might be when we're all done.
Okay. And if that's the consensus, we can do that. I just want to acknowledge that depending on what the results of Phase Two are, that staff has also worked diligently to try and provide parking solutions as well. And so, there is the potential of a no-cost or an included cost option... And so there is the potential of a no-cost or an included cost option in considering what staff has previously presented.
So for, Dunya, we look for a table, then?
Move to table until next Tuesday.
For a second? Does the table and a second, all in favor of tabling until next week? That's a non-debatable?
Just to clarify, six o'clock start, does that still work for everyone?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, we'll schedule the meeting, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The discussion is tabled. And we're moving on to C. Item C, discussion authorizing ordinance 2017-1491, ordinance amending Chapter 58, City of Zoning Code concerning the location of gardens within the front yards of residential zoning districts.
Did you see it?
Look for motion?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
Pardon?
Is there a second?
Well, I'll move to approve with the expectation it will have healthy discussion.
So there's a motion and a second? Discussion?
I'm sorry.
Kim, you got the lead on this?
Yes, thank you Chair, good evening, council. This is an amendment to Chapter 58 as it relates to the regulation of residential gardens. This, these standards are related to a garden that would be placed in the front yard. It is not adding any regulations to a side yard location or a backyard location. The definition was created for the gardens to address the specific concern that was raised as part of a complaint for a property within the neighborhood, and an image of, of that example is being circulated right now. The fact that the front yard setback varies in our residential zoning districts creates some parameters for this text amendment. What we're indicating is that if the front yard, if the garden is located within the front yard and outside of the required setback, there would be no limitation on where it would be located. However, if it's located within your front yard setback, which ranges anywhere from 30 to 100 feet from the ultimate road right-of-way, there would be additional standards and criteria in which that you need to meet. The intent of this is to keep it away from the public front right-of-way of the individual residential properties, and keep it away from close proximity to adjacent properties along that front yard area. As the staff report indicated, this was a result of a complaint that was occurring in District 7, and Alderman Nurban is sponsoring the text amendment. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the text amendment by a vote of seven to one. They did ask that we make the council aware that the Planning Commission was a little bit conflicted on the issue just in terms of not wanting to be over-regulating. I will say that the text, or the Chapter 58 zoning code does have regulations for other types of structures, including basketball hoops, poles and hoops in residential properties. And we do have a number of regulations as it relates to stored vehicles on properties, as well as outdoor storage of materials. So we've attempted to create some regulation that's similar to those other restrictions for these types of amenities on residential properties, but again, have focused our interest within that front yard setback.
See, I brought this forward because of a situation that occurred on the street in which I used to live. And it was pretty obvious to me that the people who were, actually in this case, renting the house, I don't know how they convinced the landlord to let them do this, rip up the lawn, but they were intent on putting this as close to the road as physically possible, as far away from the house where they had to look at it. And they used the cheapest of all possible materials to erect this structure. It's frankly an eyesore. I've had at least half a dozen resident complaints on that street. It actually factored into my decision to move a small amount. It struck me as odd that we allowed something like this to occur. There's no provision in our code to stop this from occurring. The fence isn't high enough, it, there's no restriction on where you can put it. We didn't have sufficient language to cover materials of fencing. This ended up being six-foot tall posts with four-foot-high welded wire, you know, galvanized steel fencing shoved right up against the road right-of-way for all the residents of that street I have to look at whenever they drive by it. Whatever, the backyard, fine, I mean, but do I have to look at something like this when I go into my neighborhood? It's not what I think about when I think about driving home to McQuann. I mean, this is something I would see back in my hometown, maybe out in the country. And even then, it would probably be in someone's backyard. No one would stick this in the front yard. So, I, I hear everyone on the, on the desire not to over-regulate. We probably do over-regulate a lot of things, but when cockamamie things like this happen, that's where we end up needing to have some sort of regulation to make sure it doesn't happen again. So this, the fencing has since been taken down. The house is on the market now, the four posts are still in the ground, and the once booming vegetable garden has now gone completely wild with weeds that are probably two and a half feet tall. So there's a different ordinance violation now, but even when it was a garden, it wasn't great to look at.
So I did have the opportunity to watch the planning video, commission video. It took about half the meeting. And I drove by there this afternoon and saw that the house is in fact on the market. My general opinion is, or view of this is that this seems to be a case of that there's some sort of neighbor relationship that is, that if it turns into an ordinance, is going to affect dozens, if not maybe 100. I don't know how many people have gardens in their front yard. I've seen some very nice ones that are done. And we do have a lot of trees here, and that does limit the opportunity for some backyard gardens. And all of a sudden, people buy an ordinance, we put out of compliance and have to move their gardens if somebody makes, you know, brings it to the attention of the city. Specifically to this property and the ordinance, you know, there's a major mention of chicken wire, and that's obviously there to try to keep deer, rabbits out, even though it's always frustrating to try to do that. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop somebody from putting up like one of those orange snow fences or something that would be even more of an eyesore because that's not in the ordinance, so there'd be other ways to fence it in. And I think that would actually end up causing more issues. And then, as mentioned, if, you know, it, it's causing a general problem, that there should be laws like, or rules about the grass being too long and be taken care of that way. And also in the video, the discussion came up that, you know, if it could be under nuisance ordinance, but the comment was, it's not nearly severe, you know, that it didn't even come close to meeting those requirements. And I fear that by putting ordinances in like this, that we may end up getting a feeling of like a neighborhood association where this is gonna lead to, if somebody puts a snow fence in the wrong spot, or to, you know, somebody objects to that, or an American flag display or something, that it's gonna create more tension potentially. And, yeah, I have to agree, the one with the mayor who voted no at the, at the Planning Commission meeting, I have to agree with him on this.
Any further discussion? Alderman.
Any idea how many of these we have?
No, I'm sorry, we are not aware.
Would anything be grandfathered?
We would have to do an assessment or an inventory or allow for individuals to come forward prior to this being enacted, some kind of publication or notification of that, and ask them to come forward and be able to document the existing condition in order to grandfather them.
Are the renters moved now and this thing's overgrown and...
That is my understanding based on discussions with Alderman Nurban, but I cannot confirm that.
By all accounts, the house is vacant.
The house is what?
The house is vacant.
Okay. I guess I would, at, at that point in time, it almost turns into a... We're regulating a problem that doesn't exist because this problem's gonna go away, and I haven't seen this, and we haven't had this problem, and nobody complained about it other than in this one specific instance that I know of. You haven't heard about them before, and, and I think that it goes along with, somebody bought their house or somebody, you know, used their house, it's part of the free and unencumbered use of their property. I understand why the chicken wire is there for rabbits, and like, I had tons of rabbits in my yard. I'll, I'd probably, although it, it looks bad to the neighbors temporarily, the person's moved out and it's gonna probably get cleaned up, and I'll probably just not support an ordinance, just another ordinance on our books that, that, you know, that may cause problems in the future for people. They, you know, I'm sure there's plenty of them around that are, that nobody complains about, and they look good, and then they may be forced to, you know, they don't hear about it, they may be forced to take theirs down if their neighbor complains. So, I'll, I'll just, probably just vote, you know, leave the, leave the residents alone and, and until it becomes a real big problem that exists, and then we should create an ordinance.
We have a motion and a second before us for ordinance, approval of ordinance 2017-1491, Chapter 58. Please call the roll.
Alderman Bushy?
No.
Tonight is just a, tonight is just a first reading, so this is committee of the whole discussion as part of the first reading for the text amendment. So we're just making sure we introduce it, getting any feedback, and if there's any need to clarify something or amend something for the second reading, we're happy to do that.
We'll, yes, Alderman Stralcek?
I just would review the fence ordinance. Yeah, it's the first thing that came forward to me, you know, if this, any, if this is enforceable under our current fencing ordinance. If they were six-foot poles, my understanding is that fencing is required to be approved at City Hall for anything over four feet. So this would have been in violation immediately of that fence ordinance. So as it does come back forward, let's have that discussed.
Not necessarily, it depends on the height in terms of where it's permitted within that front yard setback. So just, just to make sure I'm, I'm being clear with anyone, there's the required set, front yard setback as it relates to the public right-of-way. So this is adding standards, design standards or locational standards for any garden that would be located within that front yard setback.
I'm specifically asking just about our fence ordinance currently as it stands.
Yes, so the current...
Could this have been enforceable, this issue, this particular issue without this ordinance, could this have been at all enforceable under the fence ordinance?
If it had been, Rob, we would not be here. I figured. So, no, there is nothing currently...
I agree, it's an eyesore.
Preventing someone from taking over their whole front yard and turning it to agriculture in any of your subdivisions where you don't have an HOA. If you're cool with that, then don't vote for it.
Okay, just to, just to have everybody, we still need to have this come before committee before it can be, even though it's a first reading for the common council, still has to come before a committee to get it approved before it goes to the common council.
This committee, it's been before, it's been for planning.
That's why I was calling for a vote to, to approve this before it goes to the committee.
Well, the Planning Commission is the formal recommendation to the common council regarding action on the text amendment. Our policy has been to address the first reading of any text amendment at the committee of the whole level, so that we're bringing back at the time of the second reading and not wasting any time to bring back any necessary considerations or amendments. So for example, Alderman Bushy's comment about materials, I mean, we can certainly, instead of it saying "or similar material", we can add some language in there about certain, you know, any other material as approved by staff.
Okay.
Cool.
Now gonna reconvene as the common council.
I'd like to move to, to suspend the rules and take up the Isham Day House.
Go ahead. We have a motion to suspend the rules, take up item 8C. Next on the agenda, is there a second?
There was a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say, do we need a roll call vote on that?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution?
Opposed.
What?
What if there was an opposed?
Resolution 3451, resolution authorizing exclusion of agreement between the City of McQuann and the McQuann-Thamesville Historical Society for improvements to the lease of the Isham Day House, 11312 Cedarburg Road through December 31st, 2027.
I'd move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and an approval.
This was recommended by Finance and Personnel tonight, two to zero.
Any other discussion? All in favor of Resolution 3451, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you for waiting so long. Is that why you originally didn't want to be an Alderman anymore? Because of these long meetings? Back to ordinances, ordinance 2017-1489, and ordinance amending Section 9010 of the McQuann municipal code concerning the regulation of water sports and sporting events on the Milwaukee River. Recommended by the River Advisory Committee, April 20th, 2017. Recommended by Public Safety Committee, May 23rd, 2017. First reading at common council, May 9th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a, have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, do I need a roll call on this? On an ordinance, no?
Technically, but past practice has been a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Bushy?
Yes.
Alderman Worth?
Yes.
Alderman Garrel?
Yes.
Alderman Hawkins? Alderman Schneider?
Yes.
Alderman Nurban?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcek?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Meyer?
And an aye.
Yes. And B, ordinance 2017-1491, and ordinance amending Chapter 58, the City of McQuann zoning code concerning the location of gardens in the front yards of residential zoning districts. Reminded by the Planning Commission, May 8th, 2017, that is a first reading. Onto resolutions, Resolution 3446, resolution providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed 9,670,000 Water System Review Refinancing Bonds, Series 2017A, and providing the other details and covenants will respect the two, recommended by the Water Utility Commission, May 16th, 2017. Look for a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Are there any questions?
If I could just maybe put a couple words in. Since the Water Utility Commission met last month to recommend this refunding, staff and elders has been working hard to move along in the process. And as part of that, the numbers have been refined, and that's what you have in the handouts in front of you on the dais tonight. The present value of the savings is now quite a bit higher. And I thought it'd be worthwhile for maybe Dawn to just walk us through how we got to where we are tonight and what the next steps are in the process.
Thank you. The pre-sale report that you were provided with this evening does provide for a little higher issuance of debt than what was presented in your packet. As we've analyzed this and been working with an underwriter for, for negotiating the sale, we've determined that it may be beneficial to acquire insurance. The original issue back in 2009, the city purchased insurance with the proceeds from the, the issue. What it does is it, it will, the insurer will have a higher rating than what the utility is rated. It will lower our interest cost, and it is our expectation that that will more than cover the cost of the insurance, reduce the interest expense, which will reduce the amount required for your reserve fund and a few other things. So, a little higher interest cost, or a little higher bond principal, but we expect to see a reduction in the interest expense, therefore increase in the savings. We do have it out for quotes to insurance companies to see that they will underwrite it. And we have an estimate at this point in terms of the price, but that's been built into that. We expect that the net present value savings will then increase to closer to nine, nine and a half percent, and higher overall future savings, closer to 1.1 million is our projection at this time. Of course, the final results will be what they are once we negotiate the sale. We also, as far as timeline, we're scheduled to have a rating call with the rating agency on Thursday morning with staff to get the city, the underlying rating for the utility. We've actually... We've actually moved up the closing date for the actual issue to July 10th, but most of the other details are the same as was presented with the material in your packet.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, let's call the roll on $9 million.
Alderman Worth?
Aye.
Alderman Garrel?
Yes.
Alderman Hawkins?
Aye.
Alderman Schneider?
Aye.
Alderman Nurdin?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcek?
Aye.
Alderman Bushy?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Meyer?
Aye.
Item B, resolution 3447, a resolution approving award of a contract for private property inflow and infiltration of San Jose City's lateral rehabilitation work on the Resterland Drive, Quarry Lane, and Lake Shore Drive to Musson Brothers Inc. of Brookfield, Wisconsin, in the amount of $460,225, recommendations forthcoming by the Suri Utility District, which we voted on tonight, commissioned June 13th, 2017. Look for a motion?
Move approval.
Got a motion and a second. Have you heard the discussion? Please call the roll.
Alderman Garrel?
Aye.
Alderman Hawkins?
Aye.
Alderman Schneider?
Aye.
Alderman Nurdin?
Aye.
Alderman Stralcek?
Aye.
Alderman Bushy?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Meyer?
Aye.
I got skipped.
Alderman Worth?
No. You knew I was going to vote no, and you didn't want to hear it.
My apologies.
Item number nine, specified unfinished business, there is none. Intend presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstratives, and communications, none. Specified miscellaneous new business, automatic appointment, open space preservation, commission Kay Armeland, member District 8.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor of, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved. Item 12, closed session, conveyed to closed session pursuant to section 19.85, i.e. Wisconsin State statutes, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, potential sale, terms of sale of Logeman's site. Look for a motion. Alderman Worth?
Well, I wasn't going to make a motion.
Move to go into closed session. I got a motion moving to closed session. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There is a second discussion?
I think we ought to, at this point, we've had enough closed-session meetings. We're no longer talking about parameters of, of if the other side offers this, we should offer this. That's the benefit of going into a closed session is to determine negotiating posture, not for making policy decisions, and I think we're at the point where, look, we've made a proposal, or he made a proposal, we made a counterproposal, he's told us his response. You know, we ought to vote in public on whether or not we're going to proceed with this, at least unless we get to a point where, you know, there's some portion of the proposal that ought to be in closed session, because we determined that, hey, maybe we need to formulate a response. That's the appropriate place for a closed session. And so, I'm not going to vote for a closed session, I think this ought to be in public.
Alderman Stralcek?
I'd usually agree, but the item says terms of sale.
Well, it always says that. It's our decision to determine whether or not it's appropriate for closed session. That's...
Do you want to make a comment, Alderman Worth?
What?
Want to make a comment, Alderman Worth?
I apologize, I should be called.
Alderman Stralcek. I mean, Alderman Girl.
I'm always for open sessions, whenever we possibly can, and I'm going to go along with Alderman Worth on this one. I don't like the closed sessions. I think we should do this openly and in public, and if there's a reason to go into closed session, we should go into it, but if we're just going to evaluate the proposal openly, let's just do it.
Alderman Worth, did you want to?
Well, I was simply going to say, always when we have it on the agenda to go in closed session, is to discuss sales terms, if that's what it's about, but state law requires us to each make an individual determination of whether or not this is something that's appropriate for closed session, that's why we vote on it. And, and there are negotiations, that's the purpose behind, for behind closed session, to formulate a negotiating posture, but at some point, it's a policy decision, and policy decisions should be in open session. You know, the individual, if we're talking about individual language changes and what have you, we can move to go into closed session partway through our, our open discussion, but whether or not this should be, you know, so much of the closed session, for some reason, is now public anyhow, you know, whether parking should be included, whether parking should not be included, whether easement should be included, those are all issues that are appropriate for, that there could be done in public.
I will withdraw my motion, but I'd like to hear the attorney's opinion on this.
Well, certainly, as is always the case, whenever we think that there is the possibility of a permissible use of closed session, we will give you the option to do that, but recognizing that at the end of the day, it's your decision to go into closed session or not. And certainly, Alderman Worth is correct that we can start walking down the path, so to speak, and if at some point, as part of that discussion, you want to say, hey, timeout, you know, I'm not comfortable talking about this in open session, this is negotiating terms, you know, we can go into closed session, that's why we put that notice on there. So, certainly, if you want to start in open session and see where it goes, it's within your purview to do that.
Did you withdraw your?
I'll withdraw my motion then.
You withdraw your motion, is there any second? I'll second just to put it through a vote. Please call the roll.
Alderman Hawkins?
To go into closed session?
Correct.
Okay, no.
Alderman Schneider?
No.
Alderman Nurdin?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Alderman Stralcek?
Russian, yeah.
Not yet.
Alderman Bushy?
Can anybody speak into the microphone?
Alderman Worth?
No.
Alderman Garrel?
No.
Acting Mayor Meyer?
No.
So, we are not in closed session. So, who's leading this discussion?
Well, I can certainly, I guess, jump in, and Ms. Tolleson can feel free to jump in and help me where she wants to. We did have a meeting with Mr. Lashinsky concerning his proposal to the board as part of the RFP process. You'll recall that at the last common council meeting, we did have a closed session where we talked about some specific terms that we would look to include in a potential offer, and some of those were fairly large deviations from his RFP. For example, his RFP said a dollar. Your directive was, you know, a more market-based type approach that was there, and so we thought that it was appropriate to get those concerns and thoughts to him right away, so that nobody was wasting their time on something that wasn't going to come to fruition based on those positions. And as part of that meeting, I think staff took away, you know, a continued level of... I'm trying to think of the most appropriate word here, a level of obstruction from Mr. Lashinsky. And what I mean by that is that we kind of left the end of the meeting with the suggestion to him that we could put this item on for a closed session to consider the discussions that we had, and indicated to him that that could be either in the traditional sense that sometimes we'll just come and update you in terms of, hey, this is what happened, just to let you guys know what's going on, or it could be in the context of responding to specific thoughts that you had, in terms of either a specific counterproposal, or even if you just wanted to say, hey, here's my concerns, and give us some reasons why, we can look to do that. And the response that we got, at least at the meeting, was, yeah, that sounds great, I'll do that. All of you saw the response, the ultimate response, I believe, in the sense that it was an email that, instead of dealing with specific items within the discussions that we had, again, attacked the process more so than where we actually are at. So, with that said, what I can do for you is highlight, I think, the, I mean, part of the discussion that we had was Mr. Lashinsky indicating that a lot of the items that we highlighted for him were things that he could live with, or at least were not deal killers, we may modify them a little bit, but weren't going to kill the deal for him. There were two aspects that I think for him were deal killers, and that is what we can present to you, is that he expressed concerns about those two things. And simply, those things are, number one, he wants to continue to purchase the property for a dollar. I think that that was, in essence, the thoughts that we heard, and Kim, you can jump in, it looks like you're...
Purchase, purchase the .99 acres.
Right, and then that was the, the second part of that was that where you guys had made the decision that it was going to be the building only, his, his response was that it, in his mind at least, needed to be the full .99 acres that he was talking about. And so, to the extent that we have a counteroffer to kind of the proposals that we had floated, I think the counteroffer is effectively, I want .99 acres at the dollar that I highlighted in the RFP, and that's what we have. Not a whole lot of analysis or thought behind why he feels those things, other than, you know, difficulty of, you know, controlling the parking, you know, that if somebody was, you know, angry at him, he was worried that they could park 30 cars in his parking lot and effectively kill his business by doing that, and that was his reasoning for wanting to maintain control of the parking lot, but beyond that, we don't have much from him in terms of where he's at or his thoughts. And so, I guess tonight is more of an update for you in terms of where the process is at, and certainly, if anybody has specific thoughts in terms of the .99 acre issue, we'd be happy to hear it.
Could you review for us the reason, I mean, I was there, I understand, I'm just trying to, to understand, again, in my mind, why we believe that it's important to, other than for some sort of theoretical, we maintain control, for whatever that means, why, why we don't want to sell him the parking lot?
Are you looking for staff's interpretation as to your discussions, or are you looking more specifically for your fellow council members to jump in? Certainly, from my perspective, the reasons appeared to be, based on the closed session, a consideration of the fact that it's not just parking that we're dealing with, we have access issues that are there in terms of the flow in and out of the City Hall lot and those types of concerns, in addition to just the general concerns of, you know, kind of maintaining as much ownership of city, what is currently city-owned lands, as the city can. It's a finite resource, and, you know, you don't want to necessarily sell off things that, you know, you're not going to be able to get back necessarily.
But do any of us really believe that anybody is going to put a million and a half dollars, or whatever the number is, and build a restaurant and not have some parking arrangement? I mean, we haven't even offered a, an easement, a, you can get at least a certain number of reserved spots in the parking lot, any of the things that a normal, even a landlord would offer to a tenant that's going to be a restaurant? The more I thought about what we were offering in leaving that meeting, the more I thought, that doesn't make sense.
My response to that would be, it may not make sense in the traditional suburban neighborhood, but that's not necessarily what we have here. And certainly, there are plenty of developers who do just that in more urban settings. Downtown Milwaukee is full of them, where you build a building that doesn't have parking necessarily associated with it.
Except communities, downtown Milwaukee has public parking lots, on-street parking, and a variety of other options for parking that we don't have. I mean, you know, it's...
I mean, I, I would disagree with that in the sense that that is effectively what we are retaining, is that parking area, and the ability to do with that parking area what we decide. Should that be, as a result of the parking study that's done, a determination that, you know, some sort of ramp-type structure is necessary to do that, it's a lot easier for us to do that on property that we own versus property that is, you know, not within our ownership.
That could be the contingency, couldn't it? That's the whole purpose behind the parking study, is to create a contingency for both parties based on the results of the parking study.
But in terms of whether the transaction closes, but the point being is, is that in the, in the long term, or at least my take from, from the council discussion last time, was that maintaining the control gives you the flexibility that as things happen, be it Backwoods, and, you know, see what happens with SPUR 16 and other areas within the, you know, within the Town Center District, you improve the pool, and now we need additional parking that goes above and beyond whatever may have satisfied just the Backwoods proposal, you have the ability to do whatever you want because you own the land, as opposed to the proposal where you sell off the land and you don't control that. You don't have the ability to make changes beyond what is required as part of the initial development agreement.
I can just address the council on a couple points that staff raised regarding a sale versus what staff initially recommended as a lease of the land in the building, and those centered on the following issues. Staff had recommended that the city maintain ownership and be able to control the negotiations for the necessary easements and terms with ATC and We Energies. If you recall, and it's been in your packet in the past, and it was also included as part of the RFP, I have extra copies here if you'd like to take a look, but portions of the property in terms of access, as well as portions of the existing parking lot, and portions of the existing Logeman Center encroach into those easements with We Energies and ATC. Those entities will only enter into a license agreement with the underlying property owner. So, our recommendation in terms of maintaining control of the underlying parcel is that we are then in the first position and the ultimate control of negotiating those terms with those two entities. We can then be in the position to enter into a third-party agreement with whatever development proposal we want to pursue here, and be in the driver's seat, I guess, with ensuring that we can negotiate those terms with those two entities. The other reason why the ownership of that area was important to us, because we're obligated per the development agreement with SPUR 16 to implement and facilitate pedestrian and bicycle crossing across the inner urban trail, as well as the railroad tracks, and that's going to factor into our negotiations with ATC and We Energies as we address the negotiations related to these encroachments and access. And then, the, the third issue was that we recommended maintaining ownership ultimately for what the city attorney touched on, because we want to be in control short and long term as it relates to access off of McQuan Road. We don't want to, we want to be able to look out for the city of McQuan's operations and functionality of the civic campus, and not be put in a position where we may not be able to ultimately do the improvements or enhancements to the civic campus that we would otherwise do.
Alderman Hawkins? Problem I have with changing the RFP is the fact that we're changing the RFP. The RFP offered... The RFP offered 0.99 acres, and that's what he responded to.
No, the RFP did not dictate .99 acres.
Did it dictate?
The, the RFP had indicated that a portion of city-owned land and structure includes the former Logoman Community Center, one city-owned DPW tower, and one steel water tank. The exact portion in acreage of the land to be sold is to be determined based on the proposed redevelopment needs. Further, we indicated that the city reserves the right to modify and waive any and all informalities or technicalities, or to reject any and all proposals and/or parts thereof, and to accept the proposal which deems most favorable for the city. That was on the initial page of the RFP. And I have copies of that available, if anybody would like to see that.
All right. How is it that we got something different?
Yeah.
Holden girl?
But on the constraints, it said, it laid out what the, it laid out what the boundaries were. The south property line is defined as by Opitz Cemetery and parcel boundary. The west property line is defined by existing civic campus parcel boundary. The north property line shall not encroach onto the baseball field. Lay that out, that's .99 acres. So he, you know, when, when you, you put out an, an RFP and somebody comes by, this is the only RFP we really got back. I mean, this is the only one that actually gave a proposal. A concept plan doesn't count for anything. It's just, hey, I wish I could do this, or maybe I'll do this sometime. But not only that, as you go forward, it was asked that he negotiate, he had to negotiate with We Energies. That was part of the, the thing is, he had, he had to negotiate with We Energies to get this, and he was working with Julie Simmons over at, at We Energies to get this, some more parking and to get that, that easement. So he put an effort into that. On top of it, he came up with a, for, an offer for .99 acres, which would include some parking in that area on those boundaries. And now you go back and you say, well, I, I can agree that we didn't ask, you know, for a dollar, you know, it wasn't a dollar. We can negotiate on the price on it, but we should follow what the RFP dictated. And he made a clean offer on, on the building and the property, and he's been trying to work to get this, to get this done. And, you know, we can negotiate on the price, but I think as far as the other pieces that were in the RFP with the, with the acreage and with the, and We Energies, he put a lot of time into the We Energies negotiation, and now it says, oh, no, that's ours. Nobody in there, in there, I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't spend a million and a half dollars without a, my own parking. Think about it. I heard, I heard rumors now. I heard rumors now already, and I heard them before. You know, Kathy, Kathy Hollander may use, may use that area for valet parking. This guy puts a million and a half dollars in here, doesn't own the property, and doesn't have any parking? That's ridiculous. You're just forcing him to walk away from the deal. And then what are we going to do with the property? Then what are we going to do with the property? All I keep hearing about is, oh, the beer garden, oh, the beer garden, oh, the beer garden. I heard it three different times. Somebody wants to take that property after it's demolished and put a beer garden there. And it's probably the same person who wants to build a craft brewery across the street. And we're not going to get anything out of that. So we have a good offer on the table. I think we should be negotiating on the price, on the dollar, and not taking away the parking and taking away all the things that a, that a business needs in order to be successful.
And to be clear, the common council's directive out of closed session was, there were draft terms that the city staff took back from the closed session and presented those with Mr. Lyschinsky. We had a meeting, I think, on the 15th or 16th, which was the Monday or Tuesday following the closed session. So we provided the draft terms per the direction of the common council as part of that closed session. And the meeting that we had last Thursday resulted in the objection of the draft terms as dictated.
And specifically as it relates to the, the definition of the parcel, recognize that that was within the constraint section. In other words, identifying the maximum limits which we would potentially be able to consider, because we can't obviously sell cemetery land, for example. We can't sell land that isn't ours in the railroad track areas. It, it highlighted for a potential developer, a, an area that was possible in terms of what could be potentially acquired. Not, hey, come buy .99 acres. It was a constraint. This is the maximum that you potentially could be allowed to do. But to Ms. Tolleson's point, the RFP nonetheless was clear that, at the end of the day, the actual amount of real estate to be sold was going to be in this body's determination. And certainly after the last coming, or after the last closed session, the direction was building only, maybe a little bit of additional area around it for some parking or whatever. But most of the parking lot would remain with the city. And we can certainly change that if, if that's the, the purview of the council, but that was the direction that we received in closed session last time.
Holden Worth. I agree that the RFP gave those options to the council. I, I think that the arguments to the contrary are not correct. I also agree that we gave you that direction last time. And I started off my question with, I'm trying to figure out why. I've heard three reasons to control the We Energies and ATC negotiation, but I haven't heard why that's important. Because for stuff outside that 99 acres, for example, if we would sell it, we would still control that negotiation. Within the 99 acres, if there's something we want out of We Energies and ATC, we could make that part of the contract. That it has to, whatever agreement we reached with We Energies and ATC would need to provide for X. To control access for SPUR 16, again, simple provisions to put in a real estate contract. That SPUR 16 has the right to put its connections, to put the path across the railroad tracks, or whatever else it is that we want to have. Those are negotiable or reasonable points. And control access along Mequon Road, again, I don't understand what the, that means. We are the regulatory body for, along the, the state for roads. What, what is it that you want to talk about there?
The easement area with We Energies and ATC is over the point of access at Mequon Road and the Logoman Center driveway. Those entities will only enter into a license agreement with one party and the underlying property owner.
Right. And so, why does it have to be us?
Because...
I, I understand that they're only going to enter into one agreement with the property owner. And if we had in our contract with him, here's what we want to see in that contract, it is no different than negotiating the contract directly with, with We Energies. People do that all the time. I will only sell this to you if I get this easement from this third party.
Well, there are always opportunities for a subsequent owner to re-enter into negotiations. We would be at the will of the negotiations of that property owner and We Energies and ATC.
If you put deed restrictions, it says, you know, you...
Well, sure, but we're just putting ourselves in a secondary position, instead of first position for ultimate and utmost control.
Right. And even with deed restrictions, if somebody decides to change it, we're now talking about litigation and trying to enforce those deed restrictions instead of having the control ourselves. As Ms. Tolleson says, we're putting ourselves intentionally in a second position when perhaps we don't need to.
Well, I think typically, when you're conveying something to somebody, you, you know, that would not be atypical. It would be atypical to suggest that you get to control everything that happens around a property, and we're not going to grant you any particular rights for what goes on around your property. You're, and, and again, I'm not blaming staff on this, it's the instructions we gave. But I think they were bad instructions. I mean, it, it, it doesn't make sense for anybody, anybody to buy a business to say, yeah, and I get no control over parking. I get no assurance of parking. And when, you know, and comparing this to an urban area, sorry, we love to use that term for the Town Center, it's not an urban area. We, you know, it, it might be someday, it might have the attributes of an urban area someday. Actually, I kind of hope not, but I still think it should be a suburban area that has a little more density and, and what have you, but if you want to use that terminology. But it doesn't have on-street parking. It doesn't have parking ramps. It doesn't have municipal parking lots. In fact, we kind of gave up a big hunk of our municipal parking lot. You know, and, and we didn't do that with Town Center 2, where we could have made this all one big happy property with cross easements and everybody could park everywhere. That would be more common in an urban area, you know, and create municipal parking. We didn't do that. So here, somewhere along the line, you know, we either need to say, we're going to sell it, or we're not going to sell it. And if we're going to sell it, you've got to give the, the buyer at least, and, and retain whatever rights you want to retain to make sure that you get what you want someday. You know, easements and, and agreements, but you've got to give the buyer, and, and I, and the condo concept works, but you've got to convey some parking to them, or you've got to give them assurance of parking. Nobody's going to buy it, you know? And, and if, if the decision is, we don't want them to buy it, fine, but I challenge you to find, first of all, we had trouble finding even a buyer, but I challenge you to find a buyer who would buy under those circumstances. I can't imagine it. And if, and it's, and it's not fair to keep saying, we're going to negotiate with you, but we're only going to offer you something that's impossible or unreasonable. Then we ought to just say, we're not interested in selling. And I know there's a couple council members who, they're not interested in selling. Fine, vote against it. But if we're going to vote for selling, we ought to have offered a sell on some sort of terms that some reasonable, rational person would possibly buy on. And I don't think we're offering that.
Holden S. Rollt.
Holdman Worth, you'd brought up once before, he should own his improvements, and that's kind of where we started, you know, with the building plus improvements, and it expanded into, you know, some of the parking. I guess what I don't understand is why it's so easy to write in a deed restriction that deed it access to the railroad tracks, let someone else deal with the negotiations versus city staff, when they're in the position of technically being able to negotiate both sides right now. Why, why do we want to complicate this issue so much? I mean, we can deed them parking and allow them parking and have allocated parking and be agreeable as a city to make sure that the parking is accommodated for, as, just as easily in a contract on leased land versus letting them own it and write it back and then be at the risk of enforcement. I think what we're doing here is, I think we're putting the, the city at unnecessary risk. I mean, with the other project with SPUR 16, I mean, there were specific individuals that had a very hard time with the dollar purchase price. You know, he wants currently the dollar purchase price, and he wants the .99 acres. So the, the building only is a deal breaker. Anything but the dollar purchase price is a deal breaker. You know, maybe pick one, at least get some fair market value out of, out of prime land. We moved ahead with a couple proposals before because we were balancing the TIF. The TIF is currently balanced. We've got value in city property. We have control of city property. We have the only access off of Mequon Road, which is a critical artery to get in. The only other way from coming from the west into this development is a left turn into the City Hall parking lot and then pass through. This is another access through it. We're putting our dead center land opportunity in between a multimillion-dollar SPUR 16 project and Town Center 1, which is having issues with parking, in control of the access of the land with the ownership, with deed restrictions. But again, deed restrictions come with enforcement. I would agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Lyschinsky that he needs parking. Parking's critical. You have to have parking to have a thriving business, easy in, easy out. Absolutely, you need to do that. But I don't see how we can't afford for it in, in a lease situation. It's a thoroughfare from Mequon Road to come to the city parcel. It's a thoroughfare from Mequon Road to come into Town Center 1, and also in Logoman. And then you got the pass-through to SPUR 16. I, I just, I don't know. I, I, I struggle with this.
And if I may, I just want to follow up on the, the reference to similar projects being offered at a dollar. That is, that is not the case. SPUR 16, yes. But the property that was, the city-owned property that was sold to Blair Williams and Schaefer Development as part of MTC 1, they paid, they paid fair market value for that property.
But received TIF funding.
Well, the, the city did an appraisal on, on the property, and we sold our portion of the land for $175,000, which was the appraised price. And we are in a similar circumstance with, with another property that's in front of us right now.
Okay. My apologies. I stand corrected.
Holden Hawkins. Okay. So right now, the city is responsible for all the maintenance of that current property. If we sell the building, Mr. Lyschinsky, at his expense, will demolish not all the building, of course, but part of it, a major part of it. And then he will build on the parts that he's going to keep. But he will also, at his expense, remove underground tanks and other things that he, and I forget the exact list of things that he's promised to do, but he's going to pay for the things that need to be removed. He will become responsible for plowing the lot. We won't have to pay for plowing the lot anymore. And in addition to the lot, the driveway to Mequon Road, he will be responsible for plowing that. He assumes responsibility, or I'm sorry, he assumes liability for all that property where we currently are liable. And finally, he's going to pay taxes. Nobody's paying taxes on that property. He will be paying taxes to us. I think it's a win-win for the city.
As it relates to the, to those two, couple of the issues that you mentioned, a part of the discussion of the draft terms that, that we issued to the developer included the utilization of the Fast Track formula as an opportunity to offer a similar incentive that we've offered to other Town Center developers. However, there was suggestion of two exemptions related to that. All of the other Town Center development projects, in order to qualify for an incentive, had to deliver a project value of $3 million plus the value of the base improvements that they were removing from the property. So if you had a structure that was worth $200,000 and you were bringing in a $3 million new project value, your overall project value and new assessment, guaranteed assessment had to be $3.2 million. In this particular case, the suggestion was to allow the new project value to only have to achieve 1.5 million. And we arrived at that as being the new project values that we require in the two TIF districts over on Port Washington Road, TIF 4 and 5. So that, that deviation from 3 million to 1.5 in terms of new project value is a standard that is lower than the other TIF, Town Center TIF incentives that we offered. The other item was that we were going to continue to offer reimbursement of any of the demolition and cleanup costs associated with the development. That's built into the Fast Track formula and has been offered to all other Town Center developers. In this particular case, we were willing to take that off, the ultimate purchase price. In the, all of the other Town Center TIF incentives, that has only been reimbursed to the developers as a pay-as-you-go structure. Meaning, once the project's developed, once the value's created, and on a percentage split over a number of years, we return 30, 40% of that cost of demolition to the developer. And that way, the city is recouping some of that tax increment on a yearly basis. So there were, there was a very similar approach taken to the incentive offer here with two exceptions because of the circumstances. At this point, we're not yet sure of the project value associated with the redevelopment. Mr. Lyschinsky understands the 1.5 million. That equates to about, you know, 20 to, somewhere between, you know, 20,000, maybe $25,000 of tax base on an annual, on annual basis. We have not... We have not run a but-for test to, to make sure that those dynamics of those economics, cash flow as a standalone project like we have with other projects such as Dermont.
Alderman Worth.
I don't think we're really arguing, I, while he may be, I haven't heard the council argue with changing the pricing formula. I think it's more a question of what goes along with that pricing. And, and my concern is, and frankly, maybe, I mean, Rob's right, it can go either direction. But somehow, I still think he has to secure some sort of parking or we're disingenuous in suggesting we're selling this to him. Whether it's, you know, condo, the building, and, but you condo, you know, if you buy a condo at the Breakwater condominium downtown, you're going to get assigned a parking spot. You know, it may not be in your unit, but you're going to get assigned one or two parking spots. I, I think, you know, you've got to assign parking spots or do something to make a restaurant viable. And, and I think, you know, unless it's simply to tell them to go away, if that's our goal, okay, then we should just vote and say, go away. But if we want them to be there and succeed and also to be able to finance something, where a lender's going to say, well, but where's your parking? I think we have to have some sort of a reasonable offer on what is included in the parking. And his method of resolving the parking need was the We Energies negotiation. Now, whether that's, you know, then we commit to provide those parking spots for him under the We Energies negotiation or he gets them, I'm not quite sure what the difference is. But, you know, I, I, I think somehow we walked away with, I think, poor instructions to, to staff to tell him, you know, make do, figure out your parking on your own. I don't think that makes sense.
To that end, I mean, what would the preference be? If there is a general desire on the council's part, assuming that the council isn't going to say, just go away, what is the preference? Is it to sell .99 acres? Or is it to sell the building and then put some sort of guaranteed parking, you know, lease-back type situation? Or easement, access easement to the, to the property owner?
I would like to add that I think staff has the desire to be as efficient and expansive with parking within the civic campus as we possibly can. We've shared last month some opportunities to do that. We've, we've talked about that since midsummer of last year. Whether they're within the We Energies easement and along the inner urban trail or in other locations that might be more appropriate, we'd like to maximize our ability for parking. It would be still my desire or my goal to maintain ownership. And as part of that, we can perhaps do a better job of creating efficiency between the current parking lot as, associated with City Hall and the parking lot that would be associated with any form of redevelopment there. And I think the opportunity is to be more efficient with that parking would present itself. And then issues of, of maintenance would be on the city's responsibility.
I agree, you need some sort of guaranteed parking or to own some parking. I think for me, need to make sure we still maintain our access through there. There's a functioning road in the middle of that. The road doesn't have any parking spaces associated with it. But we have to absolutely maintain those access rates. I suppose you could argue for or against selling or leasing the parking. If you sell it, then it's his responsibility to improve it and maintain it. If we retain it, sure, we can maybe be more efficient, but we own all the cost of upgrading that. And I think it's a piece of asphalt that's in decent amount of disrepair and is needing to be replaced in the near term. So that's another consideration. But I, I didn't vote for it originally, but the vote was to entertain an offer with this individual. And as long as we maintain, maintain control of the access through there, whether the parking goes along with it or not. I mean, we placed a, another restriction on the development to have a parking study to make sure there's enough. So to have that and then summarily yank the parking lot from underneath them, maybe wasn't the smoothest move. It seems a little contradictory, so.
Alderman Worth.
I think the sticking point for me is, is the access to Town Center One from Mequon Road and then the access to SPUR 16, you know, where I'd like to see the city maintain ownership and control as in those two specific spots. If the parking gets sold, fair market value's fine for the parking, you know, I guess that would be acceptable. But, you know, that road access, you know, in off of Mequon Road, to me, is very important that the city maintains it. I don't think putting a private party in charge of plowing that, if their plow service isn't doing well, the city's going to be there and they're going to plow that, they're going to keep that access open to City Hall. If a private party wants to contribute some to that or do it on certain days, that's to be decided later. But to keep city in control of that access point, I think was some of the discussion that came up, you know, to, to have that city maintain the control of the land itself. You know, the SPUR 16 for the negotiations, I really like having the city in place negotiating that versus a third party. I really am more comfortable with the city doing those negotiations. They've negotiated with We Energies in the past. They've negotiated with the railroad in the past. That's an important access point, I think, and it connects everything together. And if we don't maintain control and ownership of that, I think we lose a piece of the integral pie.
Alderman Bushy.
I guess I'm not sure if it's fortunately or unfortunately, it wasn't part of the RFP process last year. But as I look at the, the RFP went out and there was an accepted approach to take. And the party here sees the building, parking and surrounding area as one of the deal breakers. And I'm inclined, if the deed can be written in such a way, or at least go either way to protect the city, then if this is a deal breaker from his perspective and it's had no fiscal impact to us to go along with that point, then I see no reason, you know, to object to that. And actually, there's the third part of the surrounding area because his proposal also included building, I think, areas for facilitating for the inner urban trail for bikers that go by. So if he does not own those properties, he's going to be adding value to those through whatever he provides. And there's no incentive if that's not his.
Alderman Worth.
Want to just add, there is no legal difference between an easement and a deed. In fact, if you buy real estate and it's subject to, it comes with an easement, you buy title insurance on both the deeded parcel and the easement parcel. And if somebody, if you've, if he, if, if we owned the property and he put semis blocking our access, we'd have to file a lawsuit the same way we would if he owns the property and he put semis blocking the access. So this concept that somehow we have more, I agree, we have to have control. We have to have permanent access. But that's something that legally can be done and there's no subordination one way or another on, on that. It's create an estate, whether it's through an easement or a deed, that gives us permanent access to Mequon Road. It's just not that legally difficult. And, you know, so I, I, I just sometimes wonder if we're making a mountain out of a molehill here.
So what direction are we giving the city staff here to, through all of this?
I would move that we proceed with the negotiation of a contract where we, and, and we give the, the, the direction to staff is that while we want to ensure permanent access to Mequon Road, and what was the other thing you mentioned?
Town Center One, the SPUR going over the railroad.
Yeah, Town Center Two.
SPUR 16.
Yeah, that, and that there would be a, a legal arrangement to ensure that SPUR 16 goes across, but that he gets some number and is responsible for creating some number of parking spots that he has control over as a, any other business owner would be.
You're talking about sale and not a lease, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it matters, but.
And, and just as a reminder to the council, the sale of a property will require a land division, which will require conformance with the technical standards of the Town Center zoning district. And there are some, there would be inability to meet some of those technical standards. So it, we can't create a non-conformity through a land division. So we will have to do a text amendment as it relates to the creation of this parcel. Now, we've all been crafty enough at times to create such circumstances. It will be a little convoluted and it'll be a little inconsistent. And I think it shines a little bit of light on our willingness to make those sort of changes for something that maybe benefits this, us as an organization, but it isn't necessarily something we would have been willing to do as part of a private market development proposal that would come forward. So I just want to make everybody aware that that would be in front of us as well.
I'm not 100% sure I understood what you just said.
From, uh, so the Town Center zoning district has a couple of standards that through the creation of this parcel as proposed, it would not meet the technical standards of the zoning district. For example, lots are required to be a half acre in lots size, which this would comply with if you create a .99 acre parcel. But it's also required to have 100 foot of street frontage. And part of why we did that is the whole philosophy about making sure that we've got buildings close to the street, that we're occupying the street frontage, et cetera. We can't create a lot that doesn't comply with that requirement because the zoning's in place. So we will have to first go through a text amendment to modify the Town Center zoning districts and either do away with that requirement or create exceptions to that rule under certain circumstances. In order to create the exceptions to that rule under circumstances, it will be so narrowly likely defined to apply to just this property that it, that it looks a little odd. I mean, in, in policy, it looks, from a zoning standpoint and from a policy standpoint, it looks odd. And I don't know that it's something, well, it's not something that staff would recommend on any other private development deal that was facing us as part of Town Center. We would hold them to that standard.
Do we have everything everybody needs here? Kim? Do you have what you need?
No. No. I guess I heard one, one suggestion.
Made a motion, okay.
But I have not heard consensus on.
Is there a consensus on John Alderman Worth's motion?
That's really not.
Repeat it and we, second and vote on it.
Want to state it again, John?
That we would proceed with.
Negotiating for purchase.
Negotiating a purchase of the building and sufficient parking to, to allow for the operation of a restaurant. I don't care if it's those exact parameters, I think, and that could be through creating, through obtaining, whether we obtain it, he obtains it, I don't care who obtains it, parking through from We Energies or ATC. He thinks he has that. I know there's some concerns with how he's doing it, bringing it too close to Mequon Road, but that there needs to be adequate parking there.
Well, I'll second that. Do we need to define the boundaries as were written in the RFP? In other words, south property line defined by the Oppet Cemetery, west property, et cetera.
I think we were just talking to Logoman Center and, and some parking, correct?
Yeah. And if there's some way to retain some edge, some, something else, that's fine. And it could be, if, if staff finds in, through negotiation, that it's, we, we sell a condominium, a unit, as opposed to, to, that's still a deed. It's still ownership. But that it's not a fee simple transfer, if that's some beneficial, I, I don't care. Because I think that that's all legal nicety that can achieve the same result. And, and therefore, that's, we had to leave some of that to staff to figure out.
So, so you would be okay with a condominium of the, the building area, maybe a little bit additional to add, you know, a few, a few number of spots and then some sort of dedicated parking arrangement on top of it, or?
Well, that's where we were at after last month. We had said the building plus a perimeter around the building.
But we weren't giving parking.
But, but not the parking. So if that's the concept, then we're extending it, the condo plat, to allow for accommodating whatever we determine as being adequate or sufficient parking, which I assume that means, based on the parking analysis results, the ability to provide additional parking in an area that would be approvable by the City Planning Commission.
Yeah, if you, he's proposing a 7,000 square foot building, we would transfer to him a sufficient parking for a 7,000 square foot restaurant building. And at least, you know, a significant portion of those parking spots would be immediately in front of his building. And, and they all would be adjacent to his building. I, I, you know, the, the concept isn't all of a sudden to sell him a satellite lot north of the library.
Right.
Just to be clear.
All that while maintaining access to Mequon Road and the SPUR 16 cross, crossway across the railroad track.
And it will be subject to successful negotiations for the shared parking agreement with MTC One as a party.
Oh, wait a minute, what?
The shared parking nearby.
That's, I'm not sure your intent.
Not sure what you're saying.
Well, there's 15 parking, shared parking stalls as part of Logoman parking lot currently. So we'll have to address location of those 15 stalls in order to allow for the ability for the dedicated stalls to the backwards.
We all good then?
That's a motion.
I, I understand the motion.
Okay.
It's really not a formal.
Look for a vote. Let's look for a vote. Appraisal. All in favor of Alderman Worth's amendment, I mean, Alderman Worth's motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it.
Can we do a roll call?
Got a motion to adjourn?
Is there a roll call vote?
Do you need a roll call?
I don't know, I didn't hear.
Yeah, it's an informal vote. It's like a.
So. What is it?
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
No, minus one.
Okay.
Minus one. Minus one.
Kim, did you want to talk appraisal?
No, we want to go home.
Nope.
Nothing you wanted to bring up on appraisal?
You don't have it yet?
So you're not stuck in the middle for an entire month.
You don't have the appraisal?
I'm sorry, there's.
The appraisal? We don't want to discuss the, for a dollar, which is appraisal price?
Yes. Um, I have an outline here of the work that we've been doing with Velbridge and Associates for the appraisal of the property. I learned from them on June 7th after multiple conversation, site visits, et cetera, that they're finding, or they're, they've expressed significant concern in rendering a professional opinion. They're indicating that the extraordinary assumptions that are required as part of their assessment raises concerns from them about the credibility of a, of a final professional opinion. There are a number of issues that they find highly speculative that would have major impact on, on the appraised value. And I have those laundry listed here. I'm continuing to work through those matters with them. Their general. Their general sense is that perhaps we're forcing and looking for an appraisal too early in the process of decision-making, including that of the parking analysis. We'll continue to work with them as part of this and see if we can get them answers, and maybe some of the conversation that happened here tonight will help answer some of those questions for them. I have also reached out to additional firms to see if we should achieve a second opinion. And I'm happy to provide, anybody who's interested in a copy of that, I've kind of summarized it and included a schedule of our work with Valbridge starting May 10th.
Look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.